Good evening, everyone. Today's February 20th, 2019. The 29th meeting of the 23rd Council will come to order. All councilors are present this evening. We are now going to a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Sanchez this evening. But please keep in mind, our former mayor Barry's father Willis Berry passed away, so please keep him in your mind in your thoughts and prayers during a moment of silence.
(inaudible) 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 Civic parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from council staff at the sign up table. The council will take a break at approximately 7:00 PM this evening if needed. We want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks and please no applause or other outbursts during the meeting. The meeting will go a lot smoother if we are all respectful of one another. We are now on item three, Proclamations and Presentations. I would love and I'm honored to welcome up our Congresswoman Deb Holland to the podium.[250.31][250.31](applause) Before we ask you to speak, Congresswoman, I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas Deborah A. Holland made history on Tuesday, November the 6th, 2018 by becoming one of the first Native American women elected to Congress in over 230 years. And whereas among record-breaking number of women elected to the U.S. House of Representatives, Congresswoman Holland fiercely represents New Mexico's first congressional district. And whereas a Congresswoman is enrolled, is an enrolled member of Pueblo of Laguna. And whereas a Congresswoman is also the first Native American woman in the country to chair a state party. And whereas Congresswoman Holland spent most of her life advocating for the underrepresented and advanced progressive values and will continue this meaningful work in her official capacity. Be it proclaimed by the council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque hereby congratulates Congresswoman Deb Holland on her victorious and historic win. Congratulations.[322.02][322.02](applause)
Thank you so much.
Awesome. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you very much. Madam President and city councilors, thank you all so much for inviting me here today. Administrators, I'm honored and also really honored to be here among all these wonderful young people who are very outspoken about our climate and always happy to support them as well. Just wanted to let you know that in Congress, we've finally got our committee assignments. I am on the Natural Resources Committee. I'm the vice chair of the full committee and the chair of the subcommittee on national parks and federal and public lands, also on the Indigenous People Subcommittee. Additionally, I have a seat on the House Armed Services Committee and my two subcommittees on that committee are readiness and military personnel. So I felt that those two committees would serve New Mexico and District One the best, so that's what I asked for. I wanted also to just let you know that I'm accompanied by my staff. Scott Forrester, my district director. Greg Sealy is a field, one of my field reps and he's a veteran and so he will lead on a lot of the issues with veterans services and also when it comes to Kirtland Air Force Base. And Sophia Sanchez, who is also a field rep and you'll see them around a lot. Our door is always open. Please don't hesitate. We have the same office that my predecessor, now governor Michelle Lujan Grisham had, so feel free to come and visit us. We're always happy to have all of you. As you've seen, when I was running my campaign, the environment, climate change, renewable energy, those were all my priorities. They still are my priorities. I am a cosigner of, and will be a cosigner of, the Green New Deal right now. We're working on that. It's, you know, it's a work in progress and so I'm always open to ideas and we want to hear from the district when it comes to that. Really want to take off on the work that all of you have been championing for such a long time in turning this district. Having a renewable energy economy, I think, would create thousands of jobs and it would help our city and our state a tremendous amount. So of course, safe streets are always on my priority list as well as strong public schools, public education for every child. So today, I just wanted to say that I support these children who are here today and they're urging to ban plastic bags. As someone who has been taking my own bags, my own canvas bags or whatever kind of bags I have, for the last 40 years, I have been taking my own bags to the grocery store so I don't have to keep using disposable bags or bags that really aren't necessary. And I almost feel like regardless of what happens here today, I want to just urge every single person in this room to think about the environment and think about the legacy that we're leaving to the children who are sitting behind me. So just want you to know that if you put the ban in place, I would be very proud to abide by it and continue to take my own bags everywhere I go and just let you know that you have the support from me if all of you want to be bold and make that stand here today. I will truly support every single one of you on that.[557.82][557.82](applause) Thank you so much.
Thank you, Congresswoman. I think some of the councilors probably want to say a few words. Counselor Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam President. Congresswoman, it's an honor to have you here today. And I know your first 30 days in office was trying to get the government reopened. We had talked on the telephone and you said it was a real challenge, but I really want to thank you for all your work in the short tenure that you have been in Washington. And I know you are going to represent this district well and this country well, but appreciate all your work and thank you for coming down today.
Thank you.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Madam President. Congresswoman, it's an honor to have you here today. And I know your first 30 days in office was trying to get the government reopened. We had talked on the telephone and you said it was a real challenge, but I really want to thank you for all your work in the short tenure that you have been in Washington. And I know you are going to represent this district well and this country well, but appreciate all your work and thank you for coming down today.
Thank you.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Madam President. Congresswoman, it's a pleasure to see you and thank you for coming. I gotta say, you know, as much time as you and I spent in the last year together, I was never more impressed and never felt better about New Mexico's future as I did having you, knowing that you would represent us from all your history, fighting for people who needed a voice, for all the work that in the times you spent investigating these issues, laying out plans to help us build a green future for New Mexico is so important. But I do also want to acknowledge, as you mentioned, your staff. Just a week into your tenure, while y'all were trying to get the government open, your staff was here working with us and sat down Ms. Sanchez and Mr. Forrester with us to deal with some water issues at the Air Force Base right away. I was in your office just a week or so ago, working with your DC office on a constituent issue already and they hit the ground running. I'm so grateful that you brought great people in that can do that work and continue that relationship with us in the city. I'm so excited. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Borrego?
Congresswoman Deb Holland, I'm so happy to have you representing New Mexico. I know that you understand our issues. I knew you as Deb and now I know you as Congresswoman Deb Holland and I really appreciate your respect for our multicultural state, for our small businesses, for our educational system and the needs that we have that are so many needs. And I know that you will continue to fight because you are a fierce fighter. And I also want to say that Scott, who was also my campaign manager, has done an outstanding job because he has really created a leadership that hopefully will go on into, you know, our legacy. But thank you for your work and my office is always open to you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Administration, want to say anything?
Thank you, Counselor Pena. You know, I think my favorite part of Deb being elected is I feel like I see her now more than I even did on the campaign trail. So we are extremely grateful to have her leadership in the district and we look forward to working together. We've already begun that work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Benton?
Representative Holland, I think the last time we interacted on a constituent issue, it was yourself as a constituent who asked us to do better, do a better job with our city parks with regard to providing recycling options. And, you know, we took a run at that in the last administration and I think we've got opportunities now. I think on the environmental front, we've got a great ally in the Keller administration. So there are a lot of ways to skin that cat, you know? They tried something for recycling, but I think the most important thing that I appreciate is just the fact that you had mentioned this plastics bill because it is, the idea that that kind of waste is justifiable by some minor convenience as opposed to the true cost of creating that waste, which, you know, the cost of the plastic bag doesn't even approximate that true cost. And we, maybe we don't know what that true cost is, but it's certainly more than what we're paying now. And instead, we're inflicting a cost on the planet. So I really do appreciate your giving a shout out to that effort.
Thank you, Counselor, and thank you for listening to me.[847.13][847.13](laughing) I appreciated that.
I try.[850.19][850.19](laughing)
Thank you, Congresswoman. Thank you. Thank you again. With that, we are going to move on to Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to ask Ms. Kathy McGill to come down and join us while we read this proclamation this evening. I'm going to begin while she's coming down, if that's okay. This proclamation begins, "Whereas Black History Month has proven to be an invaluable reminder of the cultural, intellectual, and historical richness of African-Americans since the celebration was inaugurated by Carter G. Woodson in 1926. And whereas the African-American community has a storied history in New Mexico dating back to our 19th century, including military service of thousands of black men during the Civil War who were known as Buffalo Soldiers. And whereas the theme of the 2019 New Mexico Black History Festival is declarations of independence based on the writings of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s letters from the Birmingham Jail wherein he states that quote, 'Whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly,' and that quote, 'No individual or nation can stand out boasting of being independent. We are interdependent.'" And whereas, in that spirit, the city of Albuquerque strives to embrace Dr. King's principles of nonviolence and social change and has officially launched an advocacy effort for equity and inclusion in civil rights. And whereas, the city recognizes that New Mexico is comprised of people and traditions beyond the typical tricultural understanding of our history and contemporary makeup. And whereas, the city of Albuquerque is proud to honor the significant contributions of African-Americans who have made our city and our state's heritage and acknowledge the abundance of our African-American community continues to bestow upon our city. Be it be, excuse me, be it be proclaimed by this council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, we hereby honor our African-American community and celebrate the month of February as Black History Month in the city of Albuquerque. Ms. McGill, thanks so much for joining us again. Y'all have a lot going on at the Black History Organizing Committee. Could you catch us up really quickly?
Yes, I will, Madam Chairperson and councilors. I just wanted to say thank you and as was read in the proclamation, the theme for 2019 is declarations of interdependence. And I want to just read into the record an excerpt from Martin Luther King's letter from the Birmingham Jail because I think it sums it up perfectly for what we're trying to do so that Albuquerque is a place for all of us. It says, "We are caught in an inescapable network of mutuality tied in a single garment of destiny. Whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly. As long as there is poverty in this world, no man can be totally rich even if he has a billion dollars. As long as diseases are rampant and millions of people cannot expect to live more than 20 or 30 years, no man can be totally healthy even if he just got a clean bill of health from the Mayo Clinic. Strangely enough, I can never be what I ought to be until you are what you ought to be. And you can never be what you ought to be until I am what I ought to be. This is the way our world is made. No individual or nation can stand out boasting of being independent. We are interdependent." And so that's the theme from the 2019 New Mexico Black History Festival and indeed, I hope that it's something that we take on as a city, as a people. And I thank you so much for all the support that you have given to us from the council and the city of Albuquerque. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Ms. McGill.[1124.41][1124.41](applause)
this evening to accept the proclamation. I will, as you're making your way to the podium, I'll go ahead and get started by reading it. Whereas Albuquerque Westside Day at the New Mexico Legislature was founded by Representative Antonio Mo Maestas in conjunction with the West Central Community Development Group in 2007. And whereas Westside legislators unify in solidarity on this day each year to bring awareness to key issues that are important to Westside schools, businesses, and neighbors. And whereas Westside students and community members from the boundaries in between both southern and northern edges of Bernalillo County west of the river gather for a rally in the Capitol Rotunda to celebrate their pride of the Westside. And...
And whereas this year's participating Westside schools are Trisco Heritage Academy, Sibyl High, Mark Armiho Academy, South Valley Academy, Ernie Pyle Middle School, Harrison Middle School, Truman Middle School, Alamosa Elementary, Carlos Ray Elementary, Chaparral Elementary, George I. Chavez Collaborative Community School, Horizon Academy West, Kit Carson Elementary, Lava Land Elementary, and SR Marmon Elementary. And whereas over 700-plus Westside Day participants have, are introduced to the legislative process, are provided with a civics class, a scavenger hunt, and a tour of the state Capitol. And whereas Westside Day participants are given the opportunity to meet their respective legislators and local elected officials to urge their support on issues that are significant to them and...
Whereas the volunteer board members of the West Central Community Development Group and the Southwest Alliance of Neighbors should radiate with pride as they have successfully assisted Representative Antonio Mo Maestas in organizing this event on an annual basis for the last 12 years. And whereas the 12th Annual Albuquerque Westside Day will be held on Thursday, February the 28th, 2019, at the State Capitol Building in Santa Fe, New Mexico. Be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque declares Thursday, February 28th, 2019, as the 12th Annual Albuquerque Westside Day.
Welcome, Nancy. Interesting seeing you on that side of the...[1316.51][1316.51](laughing)
I bet you guys were wondering, we never thought we'd see her again, right?[1322.23][1322.23](laughing) Well, they took me out of retirement and so I'm happy to be here on behalf of the West Central Community Development Group, the board, Madam President, and the council. We thank you very much for this proclamation. You know, when we started Westside Day over 12 years ago with Representative Maestas, I think it was like less than 100 kids went up. A few years ago, we took up 1,100 kids and they told us we couldn't do that anymore.[1348.01][1348.01](laughing) They said it was a fire hazard in the Capitol. And the great thing is, you know, everybody looks forward to it. When I was calling and making some accommodations there at the Capitol, don't even have to say more, "Westside Day, February 28th." Oh, okay, are you guys going to have buttons? Are you going to give us buttons? So we have these really cool little buttons that blink. And so when you're up there on Westside Day, you'll see everybody wearing these, the students, you'll see staff members, and we don't care whether they're from the West Side or not. They're all wearing their buttons. It's really important. Why Westside Day is important is because, as you know, we've been fighting the fight on the West Side for over 20 years and trying to redevelop and revitalize West Central and to bring more resources to the West Side. And that's why Westside Day, why it began, because, you know, through the leadership of Representative Maestas, he saw that we needed to bring our story to Santa Fe and let people know that Albuquerque is much more than the east side of the river. And so we've been doing this for a long time. We're very happy to do it. We look forward to working with the council as well as we do with our legislators to help bring resources, needed infrastructure, and services and programs to the West Side of Albuquerque. Thank you.[1432.01][1432.01](applause)
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you for all your work. She said, "We didn't call her for six months. She was worried. I told her we were just trying to get her geared up." So anyway, next item we have is a proclamation for Nob Hill Shoe Repair. Counselor Borrego?
I just want to introduce and ask the family of Julia Martinez to come up and Mr. Martinez also. And part of the reason that I decided to do this, actually, I was a client of Mr. Martinez. And if anybody has ever used Nob Hill Shoe Repair, you'll know what a great business this is, small owned business. They have just recently retired the business, Mr. Martinez, and I hope you don't mind, but I'm going to say that is fighting cancer. And this is a long-established business. It's been in the community for years, so that's why I asked them to come here today. And I believe Counselor Sanchez, you're going to start. Welcome. Welcome, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, Counselor Borrego. It's an honor to share this proclamation for the Martinez family and it reads, "Whereas the Nob Hill Shoe Repair opened its doors in Albuquerque customers in 1951 and remain in business until 2019, constituting 68 years of service to a well-satisfied and recommending customer base. And whereas in 1928, Candido Martinez, the father of Julio and Frank Martinez, founded the shoe repair business in Socorro, New Mexico as a mom-and-pop local venture. And whereas the Martinez family shoe repair business memorializes historical production practices at first repairing shoes by hand and then with the cutting tools formed from saw blades and sewing threads spun from pigskin and beeswax. And whereas Frank Martinez, the brother of the current owner Julio Martinez and his wife Diana Martinez, purchased the shoe store in 1951." And...
Whereas in the early 1980s, Frank Martinez procured his own building at 4208 Central Avenue Southeast in Albuquerque's Nob Hill District where it has remained ever since. And whereas Julio Martinez acquired the Nob Hill Shoe Repair Store from his brother Frank Martinez in 1994, employing his son Andrew Martinez and trusted employee Rudy M. Enriquez. And whereas in the last years of business, Julio Martinez's other sons Jake Martinez and Luke Wiley also worked at the Nob Hill Shoe Repair in support of their father and the family business. And whereas Nob Hill Shoe Repair embodies the owner dedication, service quality, and customer loyalty essential to the success of Albuquerque's Hispanic-owned business. And Nob Hill Shoe Repair was located in Albuquerque's Nob Hill District and a district that revitalized through times of economic change and renders iconic Albuquerque character. Be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque hereby recognizes Nob Hill Shoe Repair local family business in recognition of its 68 years of service to the people of the state of New Mexico and the city of Albuquerque. And Mr. Martinez, I thank you so much for being here today and I know that we're going to miss your business in Nob Hill.
I hope so.[1654.23][1654.23](laughing)
Would you like to say, would you like to say, would you like to say a few words, sir?
I know, I just said, "I hope they miss me."[1661.35][1661.35](laughing) Because I'll sure miss them. Holland was one of my customers.[1670.41][1670.41](laughing) So I'll try to say hi to her, but...
Well, Mr. Martinez, we hope that you win your fight and...
I'm on a terminal. I'm on a terminal. I won't last maybe a year, maybe.
Well, we're glad and we're honored to have you here today.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.[1689.85][1689.85](applause)
Appreciate all your years in business and really, you know, it's a dying art, these old ways of shoemaking and other businesses that have been in existence in Albuquerque for a long time that now are, people are aging out of and closing their doors. Anyway, well, thank you. Next item we have is economic development discussion. There's none. There's none. Item five, Administration Question and Answers. Councilors, are there any questions for the administration? Hearing none, we will move on to item six, the Journal, Councilor Borrego.
I move approval of the February 4th Journal.
There's a motion and, and a second for approval of the February 4th Journal. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Item seven, Communications and Introductions. Are there any changes to the letter of introduction? Councilor Gibson.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Going to move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing R. 128 on tonight's agenda for that, for final action. R. 128 is amending R. 1849 to extend the deadline for the preparation of a list of recommendations for potential programs or legislation on the short-term rentals. This is a task force that this Council created some months ago, and they have been meeting and working on this. It just looks like they need a little more time.
There's a motion, second, for, for placing R. 128 on today's, tonight's agenda for final action. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Councilor Winter.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing M. 3 on tonight's agenda for final action. M. 3 is urging the Legislature of the state of New Mexico to pass House Bill 231 during the 2019 legislative session.
There's a motion, second, to move the rules be suspended for M. 3. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Next, Councilor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing O. 51 on tonight's agenda for final action. O. 51 is amending Article 12, Section 5 of the City Charter, and amending Article 13, Sections 2, 3, 4, 7, and 11 of the City Charter relating to election campaign financing.
There's a motion, a second, to place O. 51 on tonight's agenda for final action. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Councilor Benton.
Thank you, Madam President. I move the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing M. 4 and placing it on the March 4th Council Agenda for Final Action. M. 4 is supporting the passage of proposed state legislation, Senate Bill 489, the Energy Transition Act, during the 19, 2019 session.
There's a motion and a second to move the rules for M. 4. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing EC 335 and placing it on the March 4th Council Agenda for Final Action. EC 335 is the mayor's appointment of Santiago Chavis to the position of Deputy Chief Administrative Office Officer. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing R. 129 and placing it on the March 4th Council Agenda for Final Action. R. 129 is establishing federal priorities for the City of Albuquerque for federal fiscal years 2019 and 2020 for the purposes, for the purpose of establishing city federal policy goals and federal program funding.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Councilor Borrego.
I move approval of the letter of introduction.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. We are now on item eight, Report to the Committee. Councilor Harris.
Hang on a second, Madam President. Can I pass for a second?
Councilor Benton. Okay, back to Councilor...
I can go. I'm ready. Oh, beg your pardon.
That's okay. Councilor Harris.
Thank you. The Finance and Government Operations Committee met on Monday, February 11th, 2019, and reports out the following items. In a matter of EC 312, 320, and 325, that receipt be noted. In a matter of EC 313, 318, 319, 321, and 322, and 323, that they be approved. And in the matter of R. 121, that it do pass. I move to accept the Finance Committee report.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor say yes.
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 Opposed, no. Motion passes. Councilor Benton.
Thank you. The Landings Planning and Zoning Committee meeting met on Wednesday, February 13th, and reports out the following items. In the matter of R. 122, that it do pass. In the matter of R. 112, that it do pass and be acted on at the meeting at which is, it is reported. I move to accept the Committee reports.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, to accept the Committee reports. All those in favor say yes.
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 Opposed, no. Motion passes. And next, we are on deferrals and withdrawals. Councilors, are there any deferrals or withdrawals at this time?
Counselor...
Counselor Gibson, sorry.
I move for deferral of RA 1, amending the City Council Rules of Procedure, Article 2, Section 4, and Article 3, Section 21, relating to the Internal Operations Committee. I'd like to move a deferral until March 4th.
There's a motion, a second, for a deferral of RA 1. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. OC 25, Staff Recommendation to Appoint Christopher Sadio to the Police Oversight Board. I move a deferral until March 4th.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, for a deferral. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Staff Recommendation to Appoint Tara Armiho Pruitt to the Police Oversight Board. I move deferral, deferral until March 4th.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, for a deferral of OC 26. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Staff Recommendation to Appoint Lamont Davis to the Police Oversight Board. I move deferral till, until March 4th.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, for a deferral. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Next, we are on item nine, the Consent Agenda. Are there any changes to the Consent Agenda? For the individuals on tonight's Consent Agenda who are being appointed to serve on a board or commission, please stand if you are in the audience, and thank you for your Thank you.
I move approval of the Consent Agenda.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, for approval of the Consent Agenda. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Next, we are on General Public Comments. There, there will be a two-minute time limit. The light on the podium will turn green for the first minute and a half, then the light will turn yellow, and the bell will ring indicating you have 30 seconds remaining to wrap up your comments. At two minutes, the light will turn red and ring to indicate your time up. I am going to call the first speaker here in just a second. Actually, there is a, the POB bill, we received a letter from the intercoalition wanting to allow for public comment. I had let them know that we would move that to the front of the agenda to allow for them to speak. And that is item, if anyone has that bill in front of them. And I don't know if we have any speakers signed up to speak on that particular bill.
A under final actions.
This is O. 23, Amending Chapter 9, Article 4, Part 1, 1994, of the Police Oversight Ordinance. And I think we're not going to move it do pass yet. So Councilor Benton, did you want to add anything to that, or Councilor Winter?
Thank you, Madam President. We've been working very hard on this bill and have had quite a bit of public comment, but we want to make sure that we, everybody gets a chance to comment on that. So I think there were some concerns that we needed a little more time, and so we're going to take that time. I think we're going to defer this for 30 days. And so we're holding these next two meetings for anybody that wants to add their comment to the POB Board. So please do. You can also do it in writing and emails, because we want to make sure everybody has the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Winter. So we have three speakers signed up to speak. Mister, we're starting with Mr. Tad Neminski, Peter Simonson, and the final speaker will be Dan Aragon.
Excuse me, what, what we doing now? Public comments or specific agenda?
Mr. Neminski, we are actually, we moved the agenda around, and we are now on O. 23, and this is for the Police Oversight Board.
Okay, thank you. So, well, Oversight Board, how functional is over, I always been Oversight Board. How many members lately? Three, as I look at, that's three of nine. That's how functional is this? Who's, who's, I asked before, who's puppet, who are? Puppeturian. Who is puppeturian? Of course, that's obvious. Director. So how dysfunctional is this board? Yes, board should decide. Look at the job also director doing. They do not work together well, simply. That's why so many left, including Leonard, after I brought him, last before he resigned. This black guy, board member. Okay, now we have interesting people applying. Navy, retire. Well, what are you expecting? Well, he's gonna be against law enforcement? Absolutely not. I am military, retire, and I know how that feel. I am not any longer, I've been a long time, and I have not, don't want to do anything with military, neither any law enforcement. So that's what we can expect of this one. Another anthropologist from California, now housekeeper with master degree. What, what kind of her expertise, what can we expect of? I could go on and on and on. With all directors, all this, excuse me, all these doctors gone. That's where we at right now, down, down in a dumpster. They don't not working well together.
Thank you, Mr. Peter Simonson, followed by Dan Aragon.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Council, Peter Simonson. I'm here on behalf of APD Forward. I was going to actually, well, actually, let me begin by saying thank you to Councilor Benton and Councilor Winter for all the efforts that you've put into strengthening this ordinance. I think we're going to come out of this process with a, a much superior ordinance to the one that we've had, even as good as it's been, and probably something that we can really be proud of nationally compared to other ordinances, similar ordinances around the country. I also want to just thank City Council staff and the councilors for moving forward on filling some vacancies on the POB. That's really heartening to see. I think that's an important move. You've, we are largely, we largely stand in support of the proposed changes to the ordinance. You've received most of our comments. I was going to highlight a couple of things about the subpoena provision and the current substitute and, but I've just been handed some possible amendments to the ordinance that look like they may address those, so I'm not sure if I should move forward with those comments.
Councilor Benton.
Madam Chair, I, you know, I think we've kind of said we, we want to hear everything we can now, so...
Okay.
Yeah, please.
Okay, well, I would just, again, urge the Council to consider simplifying the language regarding the subpoena authority and the steps that the Council and the Executive Director need to follow to execute that authority. As I've said in, in previous meetings, other cities around the country, their ordinances make the process much, much simpler than that. And I don't think we want to deter the Council from, the POB from using that authority if it is meaningful and can be used in an informative way for the investigations that they're carrying out. I also, I may have misread the ordinance, but I think it strictly limits the subpoena authority to incidents of use of force rather than any civil rights violation that might be in question in a POB investigation. If I'm mistaken in that, my apologies, but if I am right on that, I would urge the Council to include all civil rights violations as possible targets of subpoena.
Councilor Harris.
Thank you. Mr. Simonson, I think when you spoke at the Finance Committee, I think when I, I think I understood your comments to be that most police oversight boards or similar agencies don't have any subpoena power at all. Is that correct?
Madam President, members of the Council, that is rough, that is correct. Of the 50 top cities that have some police oversight capacity, roughly 20 of those have some sort of subpoena authority.
Okay, so by having any subpoena authority would actually be in the minority that actually do. And, and just my comments, that last thing I'd want this board to be used for is for someone who has a civil, civil rights claim, which is a very favored, you know, statute in the law in that it's automatic attorney fees that we have to pay, which actually encourages civil rights claims that sometimes don't even have a whole lot of merit. And then to be using the POB subpoena power to kind of lawyer up for a civil rights claim, I hope that's not what you're talking. I certainly don't want the subpoena power to be used for that. So anyway, those are my concerns, and happy to discuss them with you.
May I respond?
Yes.
Madam Chair, Madam President, members of the Council, thank you for, for those comments. Councilor Davis, Harris, sorry, pardon me. It is true that many civil rights claims can be brought forward, and attorneys can recover fees in those cases if they're brought under Section 1983 and in the case of federal civil rights violations. But under our state statutory authority, there is no actual provision allowing for the recovery of attorney's fees and damages awards, or that is to say, attorney's fees and costs in those civil rights cases. So that is a burden for many people in our, in our state who try to bring civil rights complaints forward. And this is one alternative forum for them to actually get some vindication of their rights if they feel like an officer vindicate, has violated their rights. So I think it's important that, that, that process is given all due importance and those, that those claims are actually afforded the full importance that they, that they merit.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Dan, and I apologize, I just, the writing on here, it says either Reagan, Aragon...
I saw, when she was writing very hurriedly.
Okay.
Madam President, Councilmembers, my name is Dan Regan.
Regan, there you go.
I am with the District 4 Coalition, and I'm president of Nap Heights Neighborhood I'm glad the last speaker made the comments he did about the work that's been done, and I appreciate the way that it's been done up to this point. I think the Council is missing a very serious, and I think a very necessary step in this. I have followed this process as closely as I could. I have printed over 100 pages of evolving versions of this on a very slow, creaky home printer. I've read them as carefully as I could. I've attended as many meetings as I could. First study session that I ever went to was the one on this, and I was surprised because there were 30 other members of the public, and nobody was allowed to speak except those who were designated to speak. I didn't make the second study meeting. I do not consider these types of two-minute things as communication. They are comments. There are some exchanges. They're not dialogue. And part of what happened is, back in early December, December 4th, 2018, I contacted the Ms. Yara, the one who was running your process for you, and found out that there was no planned public meetings for the rewrite of a very, very serious piece of legislature. And I just don't understand why not. You're missing an educational opportunity. You are missing a dialogue opportunity with the general public and the taxpayers. And at stake is the safety of the city, the safety of our businesses, and the safety of my home and neighborhood. And I think that you're missing an opportunity, and I ask you to consider a, at least one, if not two, public meetings, where there can be some real dialogue.
Thank you.
Again, this is not communication.
Thank you. Councilor Harris.
Thank you. And of course, you're, you're welcome to call up individual councilors and have meetings with them. And secondly, on January... And secondly, on January 28th, we had a special finance meeting.
I was, I attended that.
And that was devoted to two bills only, and so I think we, we devoted a lot of time and attention to this, and, and this is the way we deliberate, is by having meetings with people and by having council meetings and, and Finance Committee meetings. So, you know, the process works, and Mr. Simonson's been in contact with our staff lots and lots.
How many of y'all have contacted or been in dialogue with the black community and Native American community over this rewrite of the ordinance?
Sir, there's.
I'm asking you a question.
So.
Yeah, that's.
So this is.
Yeah, so make an appointment, and we can sit and have a cup of coffee, and ask me all the questions you want, not here.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
Mr. Regan. So before we take any action on this, we actually have to move the bill, so I would move O-23. There's a motion, a second. To move O-23, is there any discussion on the bill before we defer it? Counseler Winter, Counsel.
Just, yeah, I mean, I think the idea of deferral was to allow anyone to come forward who wants, and of course, any interest group is welcome to represent a group of people as well before this body and, and before, so we're gonna have two more opportunities for that before any actions taken on the bill along with tonight.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Regan, we, absolutely, we wanna make sure that the public has their input on this. This is very important. This is one of the most important boards we have. It is the most important board we have in the city, and we've gotta make sure that we get it right this time, so absolutely, we'll look into that. Thank you.
Counsel Benton.
I'll move the deferral until the second meeting in March.
There's a motion, a second, for a deferral of O-23. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes.
Madam President, can we also have, I know we're deferring it, but can we also have an agenda item at the next meeting for people who wanna speak on this bill?
Actually, that's what we're allowing now at the beginning of the meeting, so.
Okay.
We received a letter from the Inter Coalition, and, and they asked for, actually, they asked for dialogue amongst the councilors.
Okay.
And all, as you know, because of the Open Meetings Act and quorum issues, that we actually can't all, so if, I sent them a letter responding saying that if they wanna meet with any of us to have that dialogue, they're more than welcome to. We're all available. They can call down to Council Services and have that discussion with, with Michelle, and she'll refer them to the appropriate counselor, and we'll, we're happy to have those meetings. Counsel Gibson.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm wondering if it would be helpful, this is just a question really, if, if it would be helpful if we had Mr. Melandris go over the changes that, that, that we have in, in this amendment? If that would.
Well, actually, we deferred it, but I mean, that's something that we could do at next meeting, you know, based on the public comment that we've heard today, you know, I'm hoping that people from the community will definitely set up meetings with councilors, and we'll get some of that feedback from, from the community. And then at the next council meeting, I think Mr. Melandris can actually give us an update in terms of the, the process that we've gone through so far. I think there was some, I really appreciate the input that we've received from the community. I think there was some misinformation that needs to be clarified in, in the letter in terms of how long we've been working on this and, and the opportunities for public comment. So Counseler Winter, did you wanna add anything?
Thank you, Madam President, and I just would be early next week, and we'll let the, you know, I'd be willing to meet with the Inter Coalition group to make sure that we got their comments and see how we can implement those comments into the ordinance.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Now we will move on.
Madam President, I just wanna clarify, the, the deferral would be to March 4th. It was made this evening. I think the discussion may have suggested the 18th, but I wanna clarify for the public that it'll be deferred till March 4th for additional dialogue. I anticipated that it'll be deferred a second time till March 18th.
Madam President, I think we wanna defer that till the second, not the fourth meeting, but the next meeting.
Actually, it was gonna be two more meetings, so we were gonna have three more opportunities for public comment, tonight and two more councils. So it'll be the, what, what date is that?
Madam President, if it's, if it's deferred to the second meeting in March, then that would be March 18th.
March 18th?
Okay.
I'll defer to the sponsors of the bill?
Right, so that was my motion, but to make clear, we do have a meeting on the, on the 4th, and I think the opportunity to speak there is during general public comment, and typically, you can write down the bill that you wanna speak to when you sign up for general public comment. So anyone who wants to address the general public more and to speak before the meeting, they can still speak on the bill at the next meeting.
And that'll allow for the two additional opportunities, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel Harris, and then we're gonna move on.
So maybe if we could, we could put it on the agenda on March 4th with an asterisk that says it's the intent to defer it to the 18th. That way, we can't take any, any other action but deferring it, but there's, but there is a, but there is something on the agenda that.
Yeah.
Invites people to.
I think we'll just, we'll leave it as is for now, and then we'll just move on. So we are now on public comment, which our first speaker this evening is Mr. Don Schrader, followed by Tad Nemenski.
The main purpose of the U.S. space program sadly is to develop and use weapons in space for the U.S. to dominate and control the world. The U.S. space program is a terrible waste of money, brains, and resources that should instead be used to help the world's poorest people. Space travel is a desperate pie-in-the-sky delusion to escape this crazy, cruel, polluted world. Space exploration is an insane worship of technology to bail us out of taking responsibility to change our lives here and now for a better world. None, none of our sun's other planets, Venus, Mars, Jupiter, et cetera, has good conditions for us to live. The worst place on Earth for people to live is far better than the best place on our sun's other planets. The next closest star after our sun is four light-years away. Even if that star had planets like our Earth, and even if it were possible to travel at the speed of light, 186,000 miles per second, not per hour, not per minute, 186,000 miles per second, that's 3,600 times as fast as 186,000 miles per hour. And even if the spacecraft could hold enough food, water, air for the round trip of eight years at best, who would be fool enough to be trapped in a spacecraft for eight years? Lonely, emotional hell. Science fiction insanity.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader. Now it's Tad Nemenski, followed by Rebecca Plutino, followed by Art Tannenbaum.
Thank you. My name, my name Tad Nemenski. So what I wanna speak up tonight about? Partnership. Yes, Barry, RJ Barry had so many partnerships with UNM and CNM, et cetera, et cetera. Now Keller wants to have a partnership and already signed a resolution with UNM. What's the, oh, just before I get to this point. Barry estimated administration, estimated between 15 to 2,000 homeless people on the street live. Well, Keller estimated 5 to 7,000. Well, what he's doing, now he wants to build that building, house seven, up to 7,000 people. What's a product, liar, manipulator, and liar. That never will happen. He know what, what a proctonist does. That's what I got to say about him. Libra, lefty. That's all he cares to divert money from here to UNM. Oh, yes.
Please direct your comments to me, Mr. Tad Nemenski.
I'm sorry?
Direct your comments at me, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
If you can direct your comments to me, I would appreciate it, and not to a particular council.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, speaking about it, well, she wants to fill it, of course, both rooms and boards UNM hospital, has mental hospital. Yes, they, they eliminated on the 80s, they get off from this business, mental health. So, anyway, I don't, I wouldn't be able to finish. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca Plutino, followed by Art Tannenbaum.
Madam President, Members of the Council, my name is Rebecca Plutino. I'm here tonight representing the Greater Albuquerque Innkeepers Association. Our membership includes 120 local lodging establishments and hospitality-related businesses. And as a voice of hospitality industry in central New Mexico, we are very happy to share some good news with you tonight. We wanna tell you about two notable large conventions that will be downtown next month, one in a couple weeks, March 3rd through 9th. The American String Teachers Association with, bringing an estimated 2,100 room nights to Albuquerque with an attendance of about 2,000 people. The Center for Action and Contemplation, which is actually headquartered in Albuquerque, will be holding a convention here at the Convention Center at the end of March with 2,000 people and approximately 1,925 room nights. Our association is happy that the governor signed Senate Bill 106 into law on February 4th. So this is new legislation that removes an exemption in the state lodgers' tax statute that allowed a loophole for establishments with under, with less than three rooms or rental units to not pay lodgers' tax. So what this means is, starting in July, the city will have the authority now to collect lodgers' tax from short-term rentals. So hosts that book accommodations through booking platforms like Airbnb, VRBO, and Flipkey, those types of booking platforms, will now be required to pay lodgers' tax. So although Albuquerque entered a voluntary agreement with Airbnb at the end of 2017, we will now be able to collect more tax, and this will help us grow and promote tourism for the city of Albuquerque. So thank you very much for supporting tourism.
Thank you. Counseler Winter.
Thank you, Madam President. We really appreciate it. It's nice to have an update on what, what folks are coming to Albuquerque and how many, so please keep doing it. Thank you.
Okay. One more thing I wanted to add, if I could, is the downtown hotels wanted me to share their appreciation for the APD substation downtown. It's really been helpful. Response times are, are quick, and everybody is very grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Art Tannenbaum, followed by Ralph Rons, followed by Rowan.
Weimark. That was interesting with the shoe repair man said about the Congresswoman. Yeah, my name's Art Tannenbaum. There's a saying, with great power comes great responsibility. For those of you who think that comes from Spider-Man, you might wanna Google Voltaire. So with great power comes great responsibility. For nearly 10 years now, one of my biggest gripes has been the legislative branch of governments abdicating their responsibility and also relinquishing their power in the process. So now in the, in the national politics, this is becoming a really important thing. You know, you may say, well, the executive had this great overreach. Well, what about that executive? That executive had too much overreach, but the overreach would not be possible if the legislative branch of our governments fulfilled their meaningful responsibilities, if they took meaningful action. So this has been driving me crazy for a long time. The legislative branch of governments here in the United States of America has abdicated their responsibility, and it's creating all sorts of problems. For example, two years ago, Brad Winter was Acting Secretary of State while participating in the legislative branch of government here in the Albuquerque City Council. Nobody had much to say about separation of powers. There was some laughter down here. I remember several council members were laughing while Rob Perry was trampling all over you with all kinds of nonsensical talk. So beyond that, beyond the the really negative effects of legislators neglecting to take meaningful action, it weakens the system, and not only weakens the legislative branch of government, it weakens the whole complex, interdependent system of checks and balances. I hope that we can do better in the future.
Thank you. Ralph Rons, followed by Rowan Weimark.
Hello, Madam President and Members of the City Council. My name, as already stated, is Ralph Rons, and I'm a District 7 resident. I have read and fully support O-1948. I know it's coming up later on in the agenda, but I just wanted to establish that in case I'm not here, which is the proposed ban on single-use plastics to include bags, straws, and takeout containers for retail businesses that now give them to customers. So I wanna also put out that, that I am a longtime practitioner of the reduce, reuse, recycle hierarchy. And when we were a five-person family, you know, with my three kids, my wife and I are three kids, that was something we always, we practiced. It was something that was instilled in them. During that time, we would typically put out our trash cart only three times per month. Now that my wife and I are empty nesters, we only put out our trash cart one to two times per month, and usually that's because I'm, you know, putting in things like, say, from yard waste that is not picked up for, for composting. Therefore, I would like to put forward the idea of pay-as-you-throw, not a brand-new idea, for Albuquerque solid waste customers, such that low contributors to landfill would no longer subsidize excessive contributors to landfill, and that it would be, among other things, revenue-neutral. Just saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Rowan Weimark. Followed by Eric Maxon, followed by the last speaker this evening, Rachel Zulewski.
I like to think of it as not a complicated name, but I do understand it's an Y and not an I, so it could be Weimark. I have been called that. Anyway, consider me your palate cleanser, because normally I come up and talk CPC and Police Oversight Board, who I passionately support, and just wanna throw out there. No, tonight, I'm here to talk about the chemo theater, because I've had the extraordinary privilege of having been a volunteer usher there now for seven years. And the thing that grieves us is the lack of full city involvement, people not coming, and previous mayor talked about it as the jewel in the city's crown, and it's kind of tarnished because we don't get enough people coming down. When there are tourists in town, conventions and people, we get tons of people coming in to look around, but the lady I signed up with today to speak, who's lived here all her life, so she's been there three times, and we do have people coming in saying, "Oh, I've never been here before," and I say, "Where are you from?" And they say, "Here." And this is where I'd like to see your involvement. I have seen Counselor Davis, I have scanned his ticket. Counselor Jones, I don't think so. Counselor Benton is a regular. Counselor Borrego, I don't think so. Counselor Pena. Counselor Sanchez, I did see you there once. Counselor Harris, no. Counselor Harris, no. I'm not, I mean, it's just kind of roll call is that it's time, maybe you could put it in your monthly newsletters to come to the chemo. We'd be happy to give, send you our schedule of things that we have going on. And tell people not to be so scared of downtown. We're nice down here. We're not going to hurt anyone and there is parking available. And, you know, there's great stuff that goes on at the chemo, amazing varied stuff. I mean, in one week, there's a talk, there's a concert, there's a couple of movies. So please bear us in mind. And I didn't mean to insult you by doing a roll call. I just wanted to let you know that I would love to see more of you.
Counselor Benton.
Rowan. Quick question. Are they still doing the movies, the old movies down there?
No, because they got a budget cut.
Okay.
Right now, it's just rentals, so we live in hope. We'll do yet another roll call, but I won't.
If I could, could I ask, because I have to admit, I didn't go to the old movies there, but I thought it was super cool. The problem was I'd seen a lot of the movies on Turner Classic Movies for about, that's not a plug.
But it's big screen.
For many years, I don't even have Turner Classic Movies anymore. But, you know, they're wonderful movies and they were free, right? So it was a pretty cool thing.
I mean, right now, there's a lot of organizations that come in and do movies. The library just came in and did, you know, books to movie adaptations and the Humanities Council come in. But right now, the chemo isn't doing its own movies. And those we, those we, I mean, I don't work there, but it's like, I've been going there for so long. Those, there is a charge, but it's a ridiculous amount, very small amount. And it really is worth seeing a movie on a big screen. It makes all the difference. So thank you.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, ma'am. And I'm not embarrassed that you called me out, because I used to have season tickets to go there when the Opera Southwest was there and they had live entertainment and live plays. I went all the time. Unfortunately, and I realize it's budget-driven, I don't care to go watch a movie at the chemo when they have such a beautiful magnificent stage for live productions. So I'm going to, in fact, I am trying to set up a meeting in the next two weeks with some people who might become benefactors of the chemo and see if we can't do a better job. It is indeed too great a facility and such a history for us that we would ever let it go.
Can I just interject one thing? Concerts, talks, and all kinds of other things, not just movies.
I understand. I think it depends on the kind of concerts and maybe some of them are a little not my style. But thank you.
One more comment. Counselor Borrego.
Ms., yeah, Wymark? I just wanted to let you know that prior to being a city councillor, I was the redevelopment official for the city of Albuquerque for eight years. So I worked with the chemo in helping to redevelop some of the properties. So I, and I am remiss in having attended more recently, so I will make, put that on my bucket list. Thank you.
And since you did call us out, I think I'll comment as well. I've been there, I think, I can't, I'm trying to remember the last time, but the one, the one I do remember, I went years ago when it was the first economic president, my friend Stephen Michael Casada was the actor there. And then more recently, to see the Johnny Tapia. Yes. And then after that, I went, but I can't remember. As soon as I do, I'm going to email you. So the next speaker is Eric Maxson.
Madam, Madam President, members of the, excuse me, of the council. Thank you so much for being here and representing Albuquerque. The work you do is just amazing and the city is better off for having you here. My name is Eric Maxson. I'm the president of Stewart's Plumbing. I've been in business in Albuquerque for over 30 years. The issue at hand is aging sewer and water service lines. This is the piping that is not owned by the city. This is the piping that is in your yard, leading from the street to your home. It's the homeowner's responsibility to maintain, repair, and replace these lines. This can be an expensive process costing thousands of dollars. Many homeowners are not prepared for this at all. The time, when the time of an emergency happens, it's important to get it done right away. The service is vital and when it fails, time is of the essence. I have worked with a company called HomeServe for several years now and they help the citizens of Albuquerque. They approve, have approved every repair or replacement that we have requested. They have helped us truly make a difference for our customers. They use local contractors, not only us, there's a whole bunch of us. And they are really part of our community. They're not here only just to make money as a company. They're here truly to help the community and to be part of the community. They have an entire nonprofit organization that they support called HomeServe Carers that actually pays for services for people who can't afford the service. They have done this several times for us, where we've had customers in need that had expensive services that they just couldn't afford. HomeServe would like to partner with the city for a program that educates homeowners about responsibilities for their water and sewer lines. And I'm taking, that's almost my timeout. They promote local businesses, they have a network.
Thank you, Mr. Maxson, I appreciate it. Your time's up. Thank you. And I see that I'm getting waved down, that Ms. Zulivai does not want to speak at this time?
I intended to speak with, for 1948, so I don't know why I ended up in general comments. I might have.
Okay, so.
I can speak now.
Sure.
That's fine. Okay. So it's, should I go ahead? Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry for the confusion. I did come again tonight to speak in support of the Clean and Green Ordinance. I believe you're all aware that there is a subgroup of us who are working to raise awareness of this ordinance around the community and with business members. We are unfunded. We are all volunteers who have other jobs and other ways that we spend our day. But in our spare time, we're really trying to help garnish support for this. And we're finding a lot of support in the community, even if the businesses that we're speaking to who say, "This is no big deal for us," they are uncomfortable coming in public, but there is a grassroots, general support for these, for this ordinance as it's written. And a lot of the opposition that I'm hearing is making some false claims about the ordinance and that may just be that the speakers haven't fully read the details. There are claims that they have to use biodegradable containers and they're so expensive, they're $2 a container. That's not what the ordinance says. There are claims that they cannot give out plastic straws and people with certain needs need those straws. Those straws will continue to be available. So please just keep in mind the details of the ordinance as it's written. A lot of the opposition is really making some claims that are not in line with the language. So that is really obvious as we're watching these arguments. So I know you're all very familiar with the language, but keep in mind, a lot of those arguments, please, are not actually factually based on the language. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now on Item 11, Announcements. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. There will be a committee of the whole meeting tomorrow, February 21st, at 5:00 PM in the Vincinity Grealio Chambers.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. The Albuquerque-Bernard Leo County Government Commission meeting, scheduled for Thursday, the 28th, is canceled.
There will be a special city council study session on Saturday, February 23rd, at 9:00 PM in the council committee room on the ninth floor. This meeting may be canceled, but we just wanted to make sure that we got it on the books and followed the public announcement rules. Next item we have is Item 12, Public Hearings. We have none. We are now, we are now on final actions. And we deferred O-23. We are now on O-36. Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Madam President. This is O-36, amending the public purchase ordinance, requiring city council approval of supplements for professional technical services and supplements to contracts awarded through the competitive sealed proposal process. And so I'm going to move a floor substitute.
There's a motion, a second for the floor sub. All those in favor, say yes.
Do I have to move the bill first?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, Madam President, I have to move the bill. So I make a motion for approval, O-36.
There's a motion, a second for O-36.
And then I'd like to move a floor substitute for O-36?
There's a motion, a second for, was there a second? There's a motion, a second for floor substitute for O-36.
Thank you, Madam President. And the administration has done a really good, they've been doing a lot of work on this bill. I had one issue and so that's why we brought this up. And the administration really asked, they wanted to make some changes to the whole public purchasing ordinance and it was a good idea. So Stephanie worked a lot on this and I think that the administration, too, might want to have some comments and then we're going to have to defer it till the next meeting. So Ms. Yara, you want to start?
Yes, Madam President and councilors. The floor substitute includes Counselor Winter's proposed changes, which would make any contract, regardless of amount or increased supplement amount, would need to be approved by the council if it relates to changing the scope of services for management or operation of city-owned facility. So those facilities where we pay contractor to operate and schedule events for us and we collect some portion of revenue, those will be coming to council for approval in the future if this passes. The administration, the purchasing division, has suggested several other amendments to the ordinance, mostly there to clean up language that's obsolete or old. The biggest change that does concern the council would be for the approval of contracts. Recently, the limits for requiring competitive bid for contracts has been increased from $75,000 to $100,000. They are proposing that that change be made to reflect council approval as well, so that it coincides with those limits. So council approval would be required for any contract over $100,000 as opposed to $75,000. And the purchasing, our procurement officer is here, if you have any questions for the administration.
Are there any questions from the council? Is there, Counselor Benton?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the administration as to why they feel it's necessary to be at $100,000.
Sure. Council President Pena, Counselor Benton, I will invite our procurement staff down to the front, but while they're heading down here, I will just take this opportunity to thank Counselor Winter for delaying this bill for a couple of rounds while we got a chance to make these changes. As Ms. Yara said, most of these changes are to clean up some of the language and have been a long time coming. And we really just wanted to make some old changes consistent with the new changes in terms of the threshold for RFPs then matching the threshold for council approval. But if our chief procurement officer, Jesse Muniz, would like to add anything to that, I'd invite him to do that. Thank you.
Madam President, council. To answer your question, we did some comparisons to cities around to see what their limits were for professional technical contracts for bids. When it comes to competitive bids, we wanted to bring us in line with the county. Their limit is $100,000 as well. So we wanted to bring up our limit to match theirs, since we utilize a lot of the same vendors, a lot of the same contracts. In terms of the professional technical contracts, again, we wanted to move it up from 75 to 100,000. Last change that had been made was in 2011 and it just allows our departments a little bit more flexibility when it comes to doing professional technical contracts. What seems to happen is, entering an agreement with professional technical contractor, it reaches the limit and then it delays the project from what they need to complete, because they have to come back to council to get an additional approval for something. So we just feel by bumping it up a little bit, it might prevent those occurrences from happening on a repetitive basis in order for things to get done a lot quicker.
Madam Chair, Madam President.
Sorry, Counselor Benton.
Thank you. And I suppose on the, on the professional and technical, there's a lot of effort, a lot of city staff and administrative effort that goes into approving a full-blown request for proposals. So I would imagine that's something that you're concerned with as well.
Exactly. As part of the projects that we've undertaken is to speed up the procurement process. That was one of the things that we looked at, all the, all the time and effort that it takes, ad hoc committees, you know, signature authorities, et cetera, in order to get a contract out. You know, we're talking, you know, just time and effort to get these things done. So again, by moving these limits up, it really allows us to get things through a lot faster. In the three months since we've implemented some of our changes, we've seen, you know, the numbers dropped dramatically, you know, from anywhere from 28 days down to 17 days roughly. So we've seen a lot of, a lot of good things coming with these changes. So we feel that by moving these limits up, again, departments can kind of get the things they need to get done a lot quicker.
Thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. And do you know when the limits were ever lower than 75,000? I mean, did it, were they lower at one point and went up to 75,000 at one point? Do you know what?
I believe, Counselor, I believe it was in 2011. The limits were at 55,000 and they were raised to 75,000 in 2011. And so again, having been eight years since the change, we felt it was time to kind of think about moving it back up.
We assume that inflation is going to keep going, so it, yeah, it's sort of is. Sound like a good change that would, should last us a few years also.
Counselor Borrego.
I'm just curious, do you remember when they were 50,000? Was that 2009, 2010? I think it was 49.4999 or whatever. Is that Lawrence? Do you remember? Is that right?
Well, Mr. President.
At least that's what I had to live by.
Back in the Stone Age.
Yes, thank you.
At one point, they were at 25. And so I think they've incrementally gone up, you know, and I think it's, our procurement officer makes a good point, the cost of doing business increase and the time that it takes staff to review and do the work. We're spending a lot more money doing that than we are in the services we're procuring. So this, I think, helps expedite the projects and gets things out the door, which I know you all want, the mayor wants, and the citizens demand. So I think it really is in line with inflation, et cetera.
Okay, so inflation is what, about 3% or something?
Probably.
2%, 2-point-something. Okay, so 2009, 2010, and we're at 2019. And we're looking at about a 20% increase. So divided by eight, nine years, I guess. And we're at about, okay, we're keeping up. Okay, thank you.
That's pretty good, Counselor Borrego. So we actually need to, if there's no other questions, did you have a question?
No, Madam President, I'd want to move a deferral.
Let's move the floor sub. There was a motion, a second for the floor sub, O-36. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll move deferral substituted to March 4th.
There's a motion, a second for a deferral until March 4th. All those in favor, say yes. Opposed, no. Motion passes. Now I am actually going to move the agenda around. I'm going to skip down to letter E. Counselor Benton, Davis, Gibson, and Borrego, O-48. I know we have a lot of children in the audience and we don't want to have them here after our dinner break.
Or after their bedtime.
Thanks. Thanks, Madam President. To get us started, I'll make a motion for O-1845, or excuse me, O-1848. And Madam President, I know we're going to move to public comment. It's our intent tonight to discuss several potential amendments that have been offered and then to defer this legislation to a future meeting for final action. So as we're listening to folks today, we're taking input on potential amendments and other things tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Davis. Any of the other sponsors want to speak before we go to public comment? Counselor Benton.
Those were distributed to the council, or can we do it now? Just so the councilors have those on the dais. And as Counselor Davis said, we're not intending to vote on these tonight, but we want to have them for everyone's information. Thank you.
Okay, we will go on to public comment. The first speaker this evening is Mr. Dan Garcia, followed by Paul Gesing, followed by Deirdre Wampler.
Sorry, I don't mean to give you guys the plastic and the stuff, but, I mean.
If you want to get started, Mr. Garcia.
Okay, thank you, Madam President and Councilman. I don't know, my name is Dan Garcia. I represent Garcia's Kitchen. I'm the Vice President of Operations and part-owner of the company. I don't know if you've ever heard of our company, hopefully you have. But, you know, we're supposed to meet with Isaac Benton and a few others, Davis and stuff, so that we can get some clarity on all this stuff, because this is really confusing. We don't really know where we're at, and I just want to make the stance that we do want to be environment-friendly, we really do. And we've tried to be, to do that. As a matter of fact, my catering director came to me about a year, two years ago, and we've really tried to see how to go about this. You know, there's, can you hand him this paper also, ma'am? Ma'am, or somebody? I just, this is just, I just want to, everything that we thought that we need, or that we think that we need to do as far as the styrofoam containers, the plastic bags and everything. What I did is a cost analysis for what we used last year and what, and if we went green right now, what it would cost us. And it's a little bit over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So with that being said, you know, that's, we've tried to figure out, like, if you had some chili in here, the chili spills. If it's a paper sack, it's gonna fall through the paper sack. So we've been trying to figure out how to make this work, and that's why we're trying to get with councilors and whoever we need to, to say, how can we make this work? Help us, because if you're gonna have us do this, you know, we need to know how to present this to our customers and stuff, and know what it's gonna cost us and stuff. And then I wanted to go on a little bit further, because I threw in some numbers here that don't pertain to tonight, I know that. It's the plastic bags, it was the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. If Santa Fe passes the tip employees going to ten dollars an hour, that's gonna cost us six-hundred-and-forty thousand, and these are true numbers. We can back this up real simple with our account. And then we have, is that red or?
Yeah, Mr. Garcia, Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Garcia, this will sort of let you continue there for just a second. I know you're looking at a lot of different charges and changes, and I think one of the things we asked when we were meeting with several of the restaurants, and we've heard from several, and I know we will tonight, was we wanted the opportunity to take that input from the association and others and put some of those proposed amendments out that work on that. But one of the things that would be really helpful, and we can set that aside for a meeting, maybe we can come visit, if you could help us, some restaurants have provided to us the cost analysis of their current packaging versus Cisco or other providers that were providing environmental alternatives. We've seen some of those, and so far, none of those have met the level that some of the Restaurant Association or others have put out in terms of what their local provider is telling them, the actual available content. If you'd be willing to help us look at some of that analysis with you, it would expedite our fiscal analysis as well. And I know we can do that with your staff, and we can come visit and do it, it'd be great.
Sure, appreciate that. I mean, you know, and all I'm asking is if you can have a little compassion and sympathy or something for us so that we can really look at it. And I'm not saying, well, I'm saying if we can defer it and look at it a little bit so that we can really see how this is not gonna just affect Garcia's. It's not all about Garcia's here, because we're trying to be friendlier. It's also about the customers out there in Albuquerque, how it's gonna affect them. Because it is gonna affect them, because that's the only way. We don't even make that kind of money to stay in. If we lost the million dollars, we might as well close the door, I mean, to tell you the truth. So we're gonna have to raise our prices and hope customers come in so that we could stay in business. I mean, so that's, sorry.
Mr. Garcia, Councilor Borrego has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Garcia, I've been thinking a lot about this issue, and you raise an important point that has sort of been wondering about myself. And I actually like to give you an extra minute or so to talk about, you know, the content of your product. One of the issues that I've, I've been bombarded with emails is probably all the councilors have on both sides of the issue. And one of the issues that I have been thinking a lot about is that New Mexico is very unique in terms of our New Mexican food, and it's very acidic. And so I've been thinking a lot about that issue. So I'd like to hear a little bit more, and maybe you can just meet with me personally, and we can talk about it. But I'd like to hear at least one more minute of your thoughts regarding, you know, the type of food, New Mexican food especially, that, you know, would be contained in these containers.
Well, this is something that we bought, that we brought here. But this was kind of fast, because, you know, I'm not a politician, let's say it like that, and I'm not always getting all this information, and so we're not always, we're just trying to sell beans and chili, you know. So, I mean, to try to figure out all this stuff is a lot. But this is some of the stuff that we came up with, and it's almost like eating off cardboard. And it absorbs the chili, you know, quite a bit when you put the chili in this. And then if you put it in a plastic bag, and if it spills out of the plastic bag into a paper sack, I mean, it's gonna fall through the paper sack and it's be all over everything. And everybody sells red chili, especially red chili. That's the hardest to get off your carpet and stuff like that. So I mean, you know, we're not against it, we just want to know what's, how can we do this? I mean, for the city, because it's not gonna just affect Garcia's. And I did try to get ahold of a lot of restaurants. Some of them don't even know about this. I mean, it's amazing, you know, so.
Mr. Garcia, Councilor Harris has a question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia, and I have kind of a unique perspective in that what I do, sort of my day job, so to speak. I'm a lawyer and I do a lot of bankruptcy, and I can't tell you how many restaurant owners have come to see me over the years. And what I've learned is that a, I mean, the profit margin of a restaurant is really thin. It's usually between, you know, five to up to ten percent for a really well-run restaurant, but it's usually. It's usually right around five or six percent, right? Is that about where you are?
Yes, sir.
And a lot of people think that regulations, you know, they just come out of profits. But when you're coming to a restaurant, there are no profits to come from. I mean, it's a really thin profit margin business. And my concern about legislation like this is that it doesn't hurt Red Robin. They have a national, you know, apparatus, they can figure out a way to handle this, but it hurts you. And I think we really got to be careful regulating small business, especially restaurants, because, you know, we could just end up with only chains in this town, and I think that would be bad.
I mean, we've looked at that, too. McDonald's, a lot of these places, they have the little cardboard, they have a lot of stuff, it's fast food. So it's a lot different than what the New Mexican restaurants serve. So it's not gonna, I know it's not gonna just affect me. It's, I've talked to some of the others, but everybody's in Santa Fe trying to fight the wage.
Yeah, Councilor Benton.
Yes, sir.
Just really quickly, Mr. Garcia, what's the percentage of your business that's takeout? Because that's what we're talking about, right, this takeout situation?
What do you mean?
Well, the concern, your concern, from a business standpoint, is based on your takeout business. I'm asking what percentage?
We're over twenty percent.
Twenty percent takeout?
Because we have two drive-throughs, the one on San Mateo, the one on Innes School Road. And then people call in and take out food and stuff like that. So it's, it could be more than that. Actually, I didn't really get numbers on that, but on a quick thought, that's about twenty percent.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paul Gessing.
So does that mean I'm done?
Yes, thank you.
You can keep this if you like, just so you know what they are. And then how do I get with the councilors so that we can talk later? Okay, work it up, okay, thank you.
Good evening, councilors. My name's Paul Gessing, President of Rio Grande Foundation. I don't have nearly the food service expertise that Mr. Garcia does, but I would echo everything he said. But I would also talk about a few things relating specifically to the bags. Of course, Rio Grande Foundation opposes any ban on plastic bags. Few concerns initially, and some other reasons why not to impose the ban. One, when you go to the grocery store, you pull down the roll of bags to put your veggies in, your fruit and veggies. That is not, my understanding, exempted from this particular ordinance as written. So you'd be prohibiting the fruit and veggie bags in addition to the stuff you actually put your groceries in. Secondly, I'm gonna say it, there's the dog poop issue. There is no poop fairy, I've heard that somewhere before. I have two dogs myself at home, and good luck trying to pick up steaming hot dog poop with a paper bag. It's just not gonna work very well. And I might add that the city itself hands out plastic bags for free at your city dog parks, so you might have an issue legally there. But more notably, plastic bags are already recyclable. Paper bags are four times the water to produce. Paper is heavier and bulkier in a landfill. And lastly, plastic bags are actually made with a waste product made from natural gas, which would otherwise be vented or flared. And I know that issue has come up before in New Mexico policy circles. So we're essentially taking waste and turning it into plastic bags, which further down the road will be another form of waste. But they do come in handy around my household, and I encourage you to not ban them. Thank you.
Thank you. Deirdre Wampler? And Suki Wampler?
Madam President and councilors, thank you. This is Sage Pizzo, she can't speak tonight because she has a sore throat. So I will be, you know, wasn't expecting to speak, but I guess I will anyway. I'm Suki Wampler's mother. This is our third city council meeting, and I expect that I'll have to attend many more of these in the future. As a citizen and a mom in Albuquerque, I wanted you to know that the children that, my children attend a school that's off of Fourth Street, that's choked with litter that blows in off of Fourth Street. I wanted you to know that my home where I live on Griegos, my yard and my driveway are constantly choked with litter that blows in from the street. I wanted you to know that I coach a children's roller derby team, and we practice on the basketball courts in the park by the Johnny Tapia Community Center in Wells Park, which, if you're familiar with that park, I think you'll know that it's quite filthy and choked with trash. And so I would ask you to consider quality of life and environment to be at least as important as economic impact. Thank you.
Thank you. So our next speaker. Hi.
Hi.
Do you want to say your name? Is it Deird?
My name is Suki, I am nine years old. I am a member of the Global Warming Express Club at the Mount Mahogany Community School. I'm sorry I missed your finance committee meeting last month, but I got to meet Governor Michelle Lee Hongerson that day. She is very interested in the environment. I also got to meet Representative Deb Pollan. I'm not sure exactly what an economic impact analysis is. I guess maybe you are worried that Albuquerque can't afford to ban single-use plastic bags? That's what you're worried about? Here's a list of places, including some very poor places, that have already passed laws restricting single-use plastic bags. Bangladesh, Cambodia, India, Indonesia, Jamaica, Kenya, Panama, Puerto Rico, Somalia, South Africa, Tanzania, Tasmania, and Uganda. I hope we can get rid of single-use plastic bags in Albuquerque so we can be at least as beautiful as those places. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Actually, the speaker before actually talked about Wells Park being dirty. If the administration can go and have them look at Wells Park to make sure it's cleaned up. The next speaker is Stella Sledge Guba? All right. Followed by Lori Gloria, then Beverly Williams.
Hi, my name is Stella. I'm nine years old, and I'm a member of the Global Warming Express Club. I'd really like for us to pass this law about plastic bags. And I'd like to remind you that many places, cities have already taken this step, such as Honolulu, Hawaii, Santa Fe, Silver City, New Mexico, Bisbee, Arizona, Boulder, Colorado, Aspen, Colorado, Coral Gables, Florida, Newport, Rhode Island, and Washington, D.C.
Thank you. Lori? Want to say your, I don't understand the spelling here.
Gloria.
Gloria, okay, it was a G.
Hello, my name is Lori. I am ten years old, and I'm a member of the Mount Mahogany Global Warming Express Club. I'm here to remind you that our future, all of these kids' futures are in your hands. Our future right now looks like burnt trees and plastic waste everywhere. But with your vote, that can all change. The Global Warming Express Club just recently got an award from Councilor, not Councilor, Congresswoman Deb Pollan, and we are very grateful for it. We are very excited and grateful. And we are very, and we're taking it very seriously, too. We're very grateful for the award, and we're grateful for the people here, the Congress, people who have already chosen to vote to ban single-use plastic. Thank you for your time, thank you for your attention, thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Beverly Williams, followed by Tad Neminski. Next speaker is Mr. Tad Neminski.
Thank you, my name is Tad Neminski. Well, how interesting, naming cities and countries all over the world. Well, that is, of course, teach, uh, text, of course. So who sponsored this bill? Well, the job should be concentrated on teaching, not, not coaching. Things like that plays politics. Well, let's go to Rio, Rio World, where we live. Plastic bags in a restaurant, grocery stores. Every store in the country, hospitals, every department in hospital, plastic have been used. How about contractors, supply stores? For example, Home Depot, et cetera, et cetera. There now, landscapers, painters, all contractors using plastic for different things. You do that, well, now go to paper. You know how, as I said, how much energy and what it costs comparing to paper to produce? Hundred sixty-eight times less and cheaper than paper. And trees, et cetera, et cetera. That's what, now city has to also stand up, clean up your own trash all over the city, especially Central Avenue on the weekend. All these papers, everywhere paper, trash. You know, I go, I am reducing to plastic bags. I can stick it in my pocket. I can put my medicine in one, my vitamins in another, and always one month less. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Satori Ariano, followed by Andrea Moreno, followed by Vivian McAuliffe.
Andrea Moreno and I are doing it together.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Satori. I started a trash pickup club called Cleaning Up the World. This is my friend Andrea.
Hi, I'm Andrea. We are from Mountain View Private School. From our trash pickups, we pick up lots of plastic.
We meet once a month at different locations in Albuquerque and Rio Rancho. In one year, we have picked up over two-hundred bags of trash.
Keep in mind, this is meeting once a month for one hour. That's a lot of trash. This is not healthy for our environment.
We need to change something. It starts here and with us. Plastic is so harmful to our planet, water and planet.
Plastic is so harmful to our planet, water and planet.
Animals die and suffer from plastics, thinking that it's food. Think about the food chain. We are what we eat, so if they are eating plastics, so are
Do you know what plastic bags are made out of? They are made out of fossil fuels that can be not, that cannot be remade. We are running out of it, and if we run out of it, we cannot survive. So let's save our planet and future.
Ban plastic bags from our world.
Thank you. Vivian McCullough.
Ever since I was a kid, I've cared deeply about the environment, and I know that it is important to protect it for the safety of every living thing. Plastic is incredibly harmful to the environment. It pollutes water and air, kills wildlife, and blocks rivers and drains. And this harm isn't just to the environment. When animals consume plastic, the toxins make their way up the food chain and can poison humans, too. Plastic doesn't ever decompose, so this problem will never go away, only increase with every additional bag, straw, or styrofoam box. We have the opportunity to stop this now or later face severe and costly consequences, much more than the cost of switching to paper. I understand this may be difficult for some businesses, but there are plenty of alternatives in cardboard and paper. There are no alternatives to earth. This is a good opportunity for us to stop plastic pollution now before it becomes a health problem too big to handle. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carol White, followed by Kaia Tulay, followed by Annie Hannah, followed by Alyssa Ruiz.
I am here representing the New Mexico Restaurant Association, and I want you to know that restaurants support conservation and sustainable business practices. We support voluntary sustainable programs. Just yesterday, we had a three-hour sustainability, I just can't say that now. I've been in Santa Fe all day, sustainability program, and it was a forum for restaurants trying to figure this out, trying to put it together for a restaurant. We heard how restaurants are adopting a stepped certification program, including water conservation, non-toxic chemical standards, waste education, and corn-based packaging. Restaurants are working towards these programs because it's good for the environment and it makes economic sense. Santa Fe banned plastic bags in grocery stores, but because restaurants are required to serve food in clean, unused bags in order to avoid foodborne illness, they did not ban bags or straws in restaurants. We ask your consideration to carve restaurants out of the ordinance and work with us to incentivize restaurants to voluntarily participate in certification programs. That's what they're doing in Santa Fe. We would also appreciate a deferral in order to work with the council to make an ordinance that works for the environment and restaurants in Albuquerque. We would really appreciate your consideration. Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Kaia Tulay, followed by Annie Hannah, followed by Alicia Ruiz.
My name is Kaia. I am eight years old. I am a member of the Mount Mah, or the Global Warming Express Club at the Mount Mahogany Community School. I am here to continue pushing the plastic bag ban. I was at the Green New Deal Town Hall meeting with Deb Holland. It was really exciting to see how many people wanted to ban plastic, single-use plastic. I want Albuquerque to join the other cities that have already banned a single-use plastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Annie?
Madam President and members of the council, as a family who really cares about the environment, we appreciate that so many local restaurants are already using biodegradable options. And I'd like to read a statement by Robin Herring. She's the General Manager at Vinegret on Central to have it on the record. So to our city councilors, I wish I could have attended today's city council meeting, but I was unable to attend. At Vinegret, we have always taken pride in minimizing our carbon footprint on our mother earth. All of our to-go wear is made out of fiber, plant-based plastics, and 20 post-consumer recycled products. We do not use plastic bags, just paper bags. We pay a company to pick up all our food scraps from our customers, waste from our kitchens, so they can be composted. We use the compost on our farm in Nambe, New Mexico. About a year ago, we quit using plastic straws. The number of straws used in our country is staggering and is a big contributor in destroying our oceans and our worlds. We started using straws that are made of wheat stems, and I've tried them there. They're fantastic. They work. We have found ways to make the costs of our out-to-go supplies work for us. It's a huge part of who we are, and it's what our customers expect at Vinegret. It would be nice if the city of Albuquerque could offer some sort of financial incentive to offset the cost of earth-friendly products. It is part of who Vinegret is, and would be, wouldn't it be grand if all restaurants did the same? We really could turn around the self-destruction of our earth as we know it. And that's from Robin Herring. Thank you.
Counselor Davis.
Would you mind, is that, is Robin's note something you can share with our staff so we can keep it in the record?
Yes.
Or if it's not, would you ask her to share it with us? Thanks so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alyssa Ruiz.
Hello. I am here today to speak in support of the plastic bag ban. By switching to paper bags, our city can make a powerful contribution to the preservation of not only local ecosystems, but the worldwide quality of life. Paper bags can be easily reused, as they are often more durable, and can also be recycled repeatedly, as opposed to plastic, which often corrupt the recycling system and is very difficult to recycle. For plastic bags that aren't properly recycled, they go into landfills. This is especially dangerous when our own major landfill is less than one mile away from the interstate. As you may know, these bags are easily carried in the wind straight into our oceans, streams, or caught in vegetation where they release toxins into the soil. It is not only the disposal of plastic bags that poses a threat, but manufacturing these bags also takes its environmental toll. The production of plastic bags requires petroleum to be extracted, refined, and shaped. Each of these processes requires a lot of energy, and this energy comes from burning fossil fuels like oil. Nearly 10% of all the oil consumed each year goes towards making plastic. By switching to paper bags, we can begin to slow the dangers of climate change. Even if production of paper bags is more expensive, our futures, or our planet's future will be worth the investment. Each year, we give our hard-earned dollars to local stores. It is time these businesses do their part in sharing the responsibility of conserving our planet. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Patterson, followed by Alex and Adrian Hannah, followed by Mr. Sherman McCorkle.
Hello. I am here to address how environmentally careless Albuquerque public schools are. As a student, I will share my experiences. School lunches are served on styrofoam and cardboard trays. Styrofoam is terrible for the environment and takes 500 years for it to decompose. 25% to 30% of landfill materials are plastics like styrofoam. Not only is styrofoam environmentally detrimental, it poses health risks as well. When styrofoam is heated by warm food, toxins like styrene are released. Styrene is a known neurotoxin and a possible carcinogen. We can't expose our students to dangerous chemicals in the food we serve them. We much dish styrofoam. While serving food on cardboard trays has no obvious health risks, the cardboard becomes no longer recyclable after contaminated by food and therefore will end up in a landfill. The cheapest and most environmentally friendly option is serving school lunch on wooden trays or thick plastic trays that would be washed and reused. Instead of purchasing new trays for each lunch every day for every single student of APS who purchases school lunch, reusable and washable trays will save money and reduce our harm on the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex and Adrian Hannah, followed by Sherman McCorkle, followed by Michelle Benton, followed by Nicole Love.
My name is Alex.
My name is Adrian. We wrote this yesterday together as we shoveled snow out of our driveway. We have the trees. We have the breeze. We have the Rio Grande. We have the enchanted land. We fail to hear it call to us. Nature has a voice, too. This is the time to act. Think of the long term. Will it be expensive when you won't be able to even eat fish because they are contaminated with microplastics? Will it be expensive when all the birds' stomachs are filled with bottle caps? Will it be expensive when there's no clean water left for us to drink? Will it be expensive when your child is sick because of the buildup of toxins in their food? This is our problem. This is us, and we can fix it. We understand that there are some costs when you switch to paper and when you can't have your convenient styrofoam takeout container. We can all pay a few extra cents a day. This is a small price to pay with a big outcome for our planet. Think of it, a clean, healthy, sustainable environment to live in. Isn't that worth it? We think so, don't you? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Sherman McCorkle, followed by Michelle Benton.
Thank you, Madam President. My name is Sherman McCorkle. I'm an independent businessman. I'm a longtime member of the Greater Albuquerque Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here tonight representing them. The chamber very much appreciates and respects the intent of this proposed ordinance, but an outright ban on all these items might not be the best way to proceed, and we do not believe it's the only way to proceed. Other cities have successfully tackled this issue differently and in a less onerous way. For example, we could require all businesses that use plastic bags to use only recyclable plastic bags as a starting point. Then we could ask those retailers to have a collection bin where bags are dropped off to be recycled. Our goal as a community could simply be to keep the plastic bags out of our waste system. We can pull together and make this happen as a city and make the changes necessary to allow for these items to be recycled. For businesses that choose to do more and go beyond and do away with plastic straws and other items, the city could honor them with a clean and green award with benefits that go with it. There are alternative approaches to this problem. Our request is please study the proposed ordinance further with a focus on how businesses and local citizens will be affected by it. Please work with the citizens who are retailers, who are most impacted, to fashion a clean and green plastic ordinance that works for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Borrego.
Mr. McCorkle? Could you send the counselors some of the ideas the chamber has? I haven't seen those in writing.
Certainly.
So I would appreciate that.
Thank you, Madam President, Counselor.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Michelle Benton, followed by Nicole Love, followed by Julia Fitzsimmons.
Good evening, counselors. I support your efforts to keep Albuquerque clean and reduce blowing trash, especially those pesky plastic bags. However, I oppose enacting, I oppose enacting the new ordinance banning plastic bags and straws and foam containers at this time. I spoke to two restaurant managers who were not aware of this proposed ban. This ban will more negatively impact small businesses, especially family-owned restaurants. The large chains such as McDonald's and Starbucks have greater purchasing power to buy their bags and containers. I did a quick Google search, and I found the costs for containers, both styrofoam and eco-friendly. My search revealed eco-friendly products are approximately two to three times more expensive. One restaurant owner I talked with seemed, he agreed, he had similar pricing. A grocery store manager also told me that paper bags cost three times as much as plastic bags. In addition, I tried to find the Clean Water Action Study referenced in this proposed ordinance that stated alternative packaging was just one penny more per unit, but I was unsuccessful. And I asked another person who's more internet savvy, and he did not find it either. So if you could cite the study, it would be helpful to include a link in your text so we can read that. I support an economic analysis before the council acts. I would also support a pilot program involving local restaurants using alternative products. To encourage participation, you could offer a small grant, perhaps $1,000, and do a trial for 30 days and give feedback on their results. Or put a one-year sunset on your ordinance to allow time to evaluate its effect. This ordinance bans too many items, is not economically supported, and simply replaces some kinds of trash with other more expensive waste. Our goal should be to reduce the amount of waste we create, and I know the city could do more education and promotion of these values so we can all keep Albuquerque clean and green. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. The next speaker is Nicole Love, followed by Julia Fitzsimmons, followed by Hannah Leonard, and I think it says Gage or Sage. If you can make your way to the front, there's some seats available so that we can kind of run a little bit more efficiently as you await your turn. Nicole Love?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to start off saying I have had the privilege of living in Albuquerque my whole life for all 18 years. And as a junior in college, I can tell you, there's not, there's definitely not enough education in APS about recyclables. And it's always hard for the first push to, you know, go off and into there. And it looks so big, but there is never going to be a right time to switch our way of life. We're gonna need to just take a dive. So, I don't know, while our oceans are nice. So, I don't know. That's really all I had to say.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Hannah Leonard? Oh, I'm sorry, Julia Fitzsimmons, followed by Hannah Leonard.
Good evening, counselors. My name is Julia Fitzsimmons, and I own a small business, Shady Farm LLC. We're in our first, we're in our second year, and we supply fresh baked goods to area cafes, and we, I also sell at the farmer's market, where there is already a ban. The margins are very small in my business, but I wholeheartedly support the ban. My conscience dictates that I use alternatives to plastic, and I pass along the cost to my consumers. Businesses who oppose the ban are worried about passing along this cost to their consumers. But if we had a ban, it would level the playing field for all small businesses. My husband and I and my son go out to eat a lot, two or three times a week. And we would be, we take our own takeout containers, and we're willing to pay for takeout containers if we forget. I think that gradually, consumers will change their behavior when going out to eat when they have to pay for takeout containers. Thanks.
Hannah Leonard, and if you can say, what's the name?
Absolutely. Thank you for being here. My name is Hannah Leonard. This is my son, Gage Leonard.
Gage, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, counselors, for being here, and thank you for hearing our thoughts and concerns. My name is Dr. Hannah Leonard. I'm a local veterinarian here in Albuquerque. I practice in the North Valley, and I'm here tonight to express to you my support for the ordinance curbing single-use plastics. I don't think it's realistic to say that we will ever not use single-use plastics, but we are working to make an effort to at least curb their use, and I'm grateful for that. I don't feel that this is an extreme measure by any, by any definition of the word. I do think that these are achievable goals and that this is a modest effort towards minimizing the amount of single-use plastic that we all use. I will consent that change is difficult, but I do feel that it is imperative that we reconsider our ways and that we evolve. And I, I'm in- And I'm encouraged and I feel that this is our chance for Albuquerque to be part of a solution, which feels really good. And I would encourage all of us to not squander that opportunity. So, thank you very much for hearing my thoughts.
So, I guess I'm supposed to talk now? So, I'm in support of the ordinance just because if we keep using plastic, it's just gonna be in the oceans. Or landfills, that's the only place it's really gonna end up. So, might as well swim in the ocean, not just put plastic in it. So, we should kind of stop using plastic. Single-use plastics.
Thank you, Gage. Yolanda Gomez, followed by Amelia Babic, followed by Art Tannenbaum. And again, if you can make your way to the front, there's seats available there.
Well, I wanted to put some of these examples, okay? Hi, my name's Yolanda and thank you very much. Yeah, my concern is very specific. It's in regard to the senior centers. They throw away plastic. They've got the aluminum utensil, I mean, you know, not the silverware, but it's made out of aluminum. And instead, this is approximately, I've been going there for quite a while, but this is approximately maybe four years of collecting over there. This is full. This thing is full of that, you know, nothing but this. And I got all of this over there at the senior center on Fourth Street, okay? My concern is the landfill, okay? And I'm very specific as to this being for the senior center, okay? I did talk to the man that runs, that can make a difference in this. Because last year sometime, what was happening is that they didn't have them just singled out, like all the forks in one container, all the spoons in another, and then the, you know, and then the knives in another. What was going on last year was that they had packets of three plus a napkin and the people would only use maybe one. One of the, you know, the plastics. The rest would go in the garbage. So, I gave the senior affairs a call and he did do a little bit of something about it. He put them out single. He put them out single, you know? But at the same time, I had requested to him that because we do have the silverware there, or it's aluminumware, that why do we have to go this route? Yeah. And that's the solution he came up with, is just separating those three or four into one instead of throwing three or four at the same time. And so, I'm very concerned about this and I think, and I pray you guys that you can do something about this with the senior centers because this is going on with all the senior centers.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez. Pretty powerful. Amelia Babic, followed by Art Tannenbaum, followed by Ralph Rohns.
Hello, Madam President and fellow councilors. Today I was thinking about the joy I could see spread across people's faces if you were to simply vote in favor of the Clean and Green Retail Ordinance. Though, I would only like you to do it if you believe in it. You know, sometimes I feel like our bosque is more like a forest full of cottonwoods covered in plastic than a place to enjoy a beautiful sunset. I used to joke with my grandma about the hanging bags looking like ghosts. When I look back on it, it's not so funny anymore. Our earth is shedding a tear of sweat and sometimes I want to shed a tear for it. If you go, if you enjoy being in the nature of Albuquerque, whether alone or with others, I encourage you to vote in favor of this ordinance. Just to let you know, if this does not pass, we will not back down. Thank you.
Thank you. Art Tannenbaum. Ralph Rohns. Followed by Nick Babic, followed by Jocelyn Strauss. And if you can please make your way to the front, I would appreciate it as your name is.
So, I guess I did stick around. Madam President and members of the council, my name is Ralph Rohns. As previously stated, I do support O-1948. I'm a twenty-nine-year resident of Albuquerque and I began reduced, reused, recycled compost many years before moving to Albuquerque. The reason I bring this up is that for all of that time, I have commonly declined plastics and asked for alternatives. In that time, I've also noticed that a lot of establishments, including restaurants, including takeout restaurants, for many years have been offering alternatives to plastic styrofoam takeout containers and still are viably profitably in business. So, I think we have to, I guess, take it with a grain of salt that businesses are, that these businesses are gonna go out of business if they have to comply, once they have to comply with this ordinance. That's assuming it's passed. My understanding is that this proposed ordinance is being deferred, I've heard, read, so that an economic impact analysis can be done, perhaps on behalf of a request from retail business sectors. I would like to request that this economic analysis also account for the savings to the Albuquerque Materials Recovery Facility operations due to the contamination of many plastic bags and takeout containers into that stream that is being processed on a daily basis and of course, on an annual basis. I don't agree, just gonna state, I don't agree this should be voluntary because I think that there are measures in the ordinance that are gonna allow for education in informing businesses, informing consumers. I think it's also in there that you are gonna allow, you know, a grace period and I think that's, you know, a very good thing. I want to let you also know there are a large contingent of supporters tonight and previous nights. As Rachel Zulevsky said, "Many of us have taken upon ourselves to inform and educate our friends, consumers, and also businesses that will need to comply with this." I'm proud of the ordinance that has been written by my city council. And just to wrap up is that I have found that many businesses are ready to comply with this ordinance, all right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nick Babic. Followed by Jocelyn Strauss, followed by Mia Hebert.
Madam President, fellow council members. May not be as cute as, I may not be as cute as some of the kids here, but hopefully some of this sticks anyway. I have a brief example in support of the Clean and Green Retail Ordinance. I worked on a project near the Cero Colorado landfill on the west side, that's one of the city's landfills, over a span of about four months. And we daily had to deal with plastic bags and other lightweight plastics flying from the landfill into our project site. So, we had to continue to clean that up. We complained to the city. We eventually had to go to the Environment Department to get that addressed. But it's an example, just one little example of a situation that the city waste management faces with respect to dealing with plastics, like single-use plastics and lightweight. If you, that bag that the lady was showing us a minute ago, if you go to any overpass over the river and you go underneath, it'll take you about twenty minutes to fill up that bag with plastic bags, plastic forks by the river. This is the river that we advertise to the rest of the world and we cherish, but we don't act on it. So, as far as Garcia's Kitchen and other restaurants, I'd be a lot more tempted to eat in those restaurants and do takeout from those restaurants if I knew that they weren't using single-use plastic bags and plastic silverware. I'd be a lot more tempted to eat at those places if I knew that they were doing better for the environment. So, just another point of view with respect to economics. Thank you.
Thank you. Jocelyn Strauss, followed by Mia Hebert, followed by Chinz Christie.
Hello, Madam President and councilor members. Thank you for your service to our city. It's much appreciated. Thanks for being here. And Counselor Winter, I believe I emailed you about this ordinance a while back, so hopefully you got that. And basically, I'm just here as a mother of two and someone who loves our environment. And I think it's really quite simple. I think it just comes down to our earth. And we have one, we've been given one planet Earth and why would we not do everything possible in our power to help protect and, you know, preserve our environment and our earth? So, I think Albuquerque would be making huge strides by passing this ordinance. And, you know, a lot of places have done it. The kids mentioned so many places and it's just great to see all of them here. My ten-year-old wanted to come and I wasn't sure it would be a great environment, but I should have brought him along. So, he picks up trash all the time and my fourteen-year-old also thinks this would be great. So, I understand the financial questions that restaurants have. I know that, I think we just have to get creative, you know, clearly there have to be some solutions that, some compromising perhaps that can happen and creativity. So, I know there are places, The Range Cafe uses plastics that can be recycled with their chili. It seems to work well. You know, again, I don't know all the costs and all those things, but I'm sure things can be figured out. The dog poop bags, I don't think that's part of the ordinance and I use them all the time for my two labs. And I believe that most of them are biodegradable, so I think that's probably not an issue. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And these are quite handy, by the way. I used to always forget my bags in the car, the big canvas ones, but, you know, you could just get these, they fit in your purse and it's made all the difference for me, so.
Thanks. So, now we are in Mia.
Hi, my name is Mia Abear. I'm the catering and marketing director for Garcia's Kitchen. And personally, I am, you know, a proponent of not using single-use plastic and containers and I see the waste and all of that. As someone in the restaurant industry, I also see the cost for the restaurant on the horizon. And the practical implementation of the ordinance, it just seems a little, you can't quite tell what will be included, what won't be included in the ordinance. So, I think the practicality of it is a bit confusing. And as we stated earlier, you know, the products that are available are not conducive to our New Mexican chili and it's gonna be a little difficult to serve our product in that as well. And then the other thing I would like to mention is the fact that even though the container might be labeled recyclable, it is only recyclable if the consumer cleans the container before they put it into the recycling bin. And that is something that will be, you know, you're passing on this container to the consumer in hopes they're gonna recycle it, but do we really know what's gonna happen when they get it home? So, that's just some thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Chinz Christie. Followed by Joshua Parks, followed by Arcelia Ayisas, followed by Harper Ganble.
Good evening, Madam President and members of the City Council. My name is Chris Christie. I'm a lifelong restaurateur and a member of the New Mexico Restaurant Association. And I'm here to speak and offer some help in trying to figure out what are good solutions for the restaurant industry and our takeout debacle. I believe all restaurants want to do the right thing and take the higher road. However, there are many costs involved. And part of that, and I just did a little quick homework yesterday, given the opportunity in Santa Fe, to show an example of a six-inch styrofoam container, on average runs about fifteen cents. When you upgrade it to the next level, which is a fiber container, there's no plastics in it, they will absorb a little bit of moisture very rapidly, they jump up to forty cents. That's a hundred and sixty percent increase. So, to give you an example, five hundred, which is a normal case count, at fifteen cents a piece is about seventy-five dollars. If you upgrade to a forty-cent container, which is the next level up, packed at five hundred, it's a two-hundred-dollar case lot. That's a hundred and twenty-five dollar increase on only one takeout item. Now, that's a fibrous item and it's not going to be something that's going to work for Mexican food or hot food or anything that's moist. You have to upgrade to now a forty-three cent container, which now we have now increased our cost a hundred and seventy percent. And those will be a recyclable container. So, we have many issues, many costs involved. And I would be available to help you do homework on the math to see if we can find a good way and coach our people in the restaurant business through the Restaurant Association and through the National Restaurant Association. Thank you.
Counselor Benton.
Yeah, just a question. So, before I ever saw a foam container, I saw a kind of a corrugated lightweight aluminum container that's liquid-proof, heat-resistant, has a paper top on it. Is that what we were looking at?
The ones I looked at were just the lowest-end to environmentally friendly clams. When you get into anything that has a window, then the prices escalate.
I'm asking about, when I got a takeout, when I was a kid, it was aluminum, an aluminum, a lightweight aluminum foil-type product with a paper top. With fold-over edges. Anybody, does that sound familiar to anyone?
We have those. Because of the price of aluminum, that far exceeds the price of cardboard. And aluminum is not, well, because they're not a standard mainstream item.
I thought it was super mainstream. Anyway, I think, you know, there are all sorts of options, of course, and we do need to look at all of those. I would just say that there's a cost to, there's a cost that's not being charged. When we get something that costs a penny and it's given away for free and it goes into the waste stream. There's a lot of discussion about whether this has something to do with global warming or the energy inputs. This really isn't about that. It's about the quality of the waste that's being put into the earth on a daily basis. Or worse, blowing around the earth or blowing into our irrigation canals. I mean, our local irrigation district has to deal with picking this out of the irrigation dishes. The flood control district, they have to have these combs that they're trying to keep clean and especially during a flood event. These combs get clogged up with the stuff and it actually floods more. So, there are all sorts of hidden costs is my point about it. And I'm really interested in the alternatives and I think we're, one of the amendments we have here does give a longer phase-in period for the food service industry than for the other items, the retail items. And so, we're cognizant and we want to keep the discussion going, so. Thank you.
Ms. Chris?
Counselor Davis, I didn't know if you were.
I'm sorry, yeah, and I know Counselor Jones has a question for you on the side. Really quickly, you know your numbers and so I appreciate that. I just wanted to ask really quickly, what's the average sort of cost of a meal or cost of takeout at your restaurant?
I used to own Black Mesa Coffee Company. I recently sold it. And so, our check average, we would have one for a coffee and a Danish. Everything was on, and my business was disposable, it's the nature of the business. So, my morning coffee and donut would be somewhere around the six-dollar mark, on average, from the lowest to the highest. And then our evening meal would be more like a twelve-dollar mark.
Thank you, ma'am. And so, say a twelve-dollar, because I don't think you put a donut in a clam shell for everybody to go.
No, but, you know, a quiche. We had many, many issues with the airport because we also lived to a very high standard. And with that, we used a, we went from styrofoam into the fiber items. We would have to heat them separately and then put them in the fiber thing and steam and heat will soften those. So, they're only good for short transport and a quick eat. They're not good for a long term.
I appreciate that and we should continue this conversation. As Counselor Benton mentioned, we talked to some other restaurateurs in town who had used the aluminum at about nine cents a unit or found some other folks that were using that. And the BioPark has actually given us some of their cost for their, because they're use a hundred percent recyclable, biodegradable products for their wet, cold, wet, hot and cold items. And so, we've got some real data that I think we'd love to work with you on. I'm curious, you know, you knew those customers and whether you think they would object to that twenty-five cent cost to cover that takeout if that was an option on their bill?
I think it depends on how you factor the cost and I think it depends on your customer. For we at the airport, the majority of the things I sold got on the airplane. So, you don't go on an airplane with something big and bulky because there's no way to dispose of it. So, using a paper bag, using paper wrap, using the types of plastics. We did have some things that we put our soups in because it's the same problem. Anything that's wet, that gets a drop on anything, paper. Anything that's wet, that gets a drop on anything paper, takes, ruins the integrity of the, of the paper bag. So, it takes a combination of products to handle the various foods. A dry food can simply, a donut or a Danish can be put in a very simple paper bag, but a soup has to be something that's contained that can, the steam can be released and yet still be waterproof. So, there's many things. And I think, you know, the whole educational process of the environmentally friendly products is very important. Many, many things that appear to be recyclable and, and simple like a paper cup have a plastic lining or something that keeps it from being leaking. You've all had your Starbucks coffee on your desk overnight. It's not like you come in and it's all wilted down and everything has leaked. They, they, they have something so that it's not water-permeable. They're not always as healthy and as biodegradable as one would think. So, education's very important and when we use the word compostable in things, guess what? Compost means you have to have microorganisms, you have to have water, you have to have something that creates heat. We don't do that in our landfills. We keep our landfills very dry. So, we are creating more trash with the illusion that we're being environmentally friendly. You have to be very careful, we don't get in that trap.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you. And we'll offer, I think, some of that about the landfill we're going to hear about from Solid Waste, I think, at our next meeting. But if you have some of that data, we're asking some of the restaurant folks to send that in. Folks have done that and we encourage you to do that. And thank you for the time, Madam President.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Joshua Parks, followed by Arcelia Ayis, followed by Harper Gamble.
Madam President, Councilmembers, thank you all for hearing me this evening. My name is Joshua Parks. I'm a junior at the University of Uni, ah, sorry, pardon me, I'm a little nervous. I'm a junior at the University of New Mexico and I speak for the trees and the streams and the birds and the lizards and our waterways. And I think I echo the voices of a lot of concerned people here tonight in saying that we must go forth with the ban on plastic straws, takeout containers and polystyrene. The real thing that we cannot afford is to continue producing these items that choke our ecosystems and our waterways because in the end, we're only hurting ourselves. And so, I don't really see any other way about it because I think what we are all concerned about as humans on the earth is sustainable development. How do we move forward and maintain the ability to continue existing on this planet with our friends and our family and our loved ones and the animals that we share this planet with? And so, our best interest is promoting that existence on this planet. And I think it's pretty clear to see for most of us that these convenience items do not promote our existence on this planet. So, to continue using them is to endanger our very existence on this planet and, you know, there's nothing more valuable, more incredible than being a living, conscious being on the planet. So, I think it would behoove us all to do the best thing to promote that.
Thank you. Thank you. Arcelia, followed by Harper, Valancourt.
Madam President, members of the council, my name's Arcelia Ayis. I'm a fellow with Environment New Mexico, a statewide citizen-based environmental advocacy organization. Each year, the United States generates more than 4 million tons of plastic in the form of these single-use articles. In New Mexico, we throw away approximately 420,000 foam cups every day. Only 13% of this matter ends up being recycled, leaving almost 3.5 million tons of non-biodegradable plastic litter to pollute our waterways, clog our landfills and harm our wildlife. Now, most of us probably won't experience firsthand the negative repercussions of throwing away a takeout container, but the fact is that we are leaving behind a world that's dirtier than the one that we were born into. And our kids and our grandkids are the ones that will be burdened with cleaning it up if we don't take on that burden first. For this reason, we support Council Bill 01948 and because something that is used for a few minutes should not be allowed to contaminate our planet for centuries. Thank you.
Thank you, Harper Gamble, followed by Jason Valancourt.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the council. My name's Harper Gamble. I'm a student at UNM, majoring in economics and political science. I'm also the founder and president of the UNM Environmental Coalition. This coalition consists of six student organizations on campus, which have hundreds of students in them, committed to working towards a cleaner earth during our years in college. All of our members agree plastics are a substance that will persist long past our lives. Therefore, it is irresponsible for us to keep on using them for our own convenience. Plastics are detrimental to our wildlife, our waterways and, of course, to us. The average American family will take home 1,500 plastic bags from the grocery store each year while only bringing back about 15 of those. So, really reducing use is much better than relying on people to recycle. When plastics do get recycled, there is large amounts of energy and pollution associated with that. So, we want to reduce rather than, than recycle. Our coalition has been working with businesses in the student union building in looking for alternatives to plastic straws. We found that there were compostable straws that were one cent more expensive for every 10 straws. Businesses can easily add one cent onto their drinks without the consumer saying, "Well, I'm going to take my business elsewhere." In fact, consumers are relatively inelastic with their, with price increases on that, on food. So, there are costs associated with changing, but at this point, those costs are being paid by future generations. We need to take accountability for these externalities. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jason, followed by Sarah Pierpont, followed by the, our final speaker of the evening, Gwen Houston.
Good evening, Madam President, counselors, sorry. I've spent a lot of time in county commission meetings. First, I want to say that, and I very rarely introduce myself this way, my name is Jason Valancourt and I am the grassroots director for Americans for Prosperity here in New Mexico. The only reason I'm telling you that, I usually come here just as a citizen, one of, one of your constituents. The reason I'm telling you that tonight is because we have had some massive grassroots activity and I'm very proud of these young people and their engagement in grassroots activity. I don't agree with them, but I, I'm proud of what they're doing and I encourage them to keep doing this. This is a representative republic and this is how your voice gets heard. So, I encourage these young people to continue in their efforts to engage you all in the political process. I think it's wonderful. The reason that I disagree with them, not, not because I, I think that we shouldn't always be looking to take care of our planet and that, that we have a responsibility not only to that generation, but, but their children. Because we do, we have that responsibility. What, what I oppose is the idea of banning things. See, I'm an American and the, the idea that we ban things in this country, other than murder and rape and some of the things that we all commonly agree on, was this idea of freedom. And I know these young people up here would not want me on the side of banning video games because we have scientific data that says video games are causing problems in our society. But that's the direction that, that, that we have gone, and I'm going to try to finish this in 20 seconds. This is about freedom and this is about community and about education. It is not about the role of government and I want people to start asking this question, what is the proper role of government? I appreciate all of you, I don't envy any of you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Counselor Harris.
Mr. Valancourt, you don't have to come back, but just hang out for a second.
I've never been asked questions.
Okay. Actually, this is a different kind of question. We're going to be going to a dinner break after this bill. We're probably going to be deferring it and so if you could hang around for a second, I'd like to visit with you.
Absolutely, and thank you guys for listening.
Thank you. Sarah Pierpont, followed by, again, like I said, Gwen Houston.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Pierpont. I'm the executive director of the New Mexico Recycling Coalition. We are a statewide, member-supported nonprofit organization with over 250 members throughout the state. Our members represent municipalities, tribes, universities, federal entities. The city of Albuquerque is a member of our organization. And we strongly support this ordinance, the Albuquerque Clean and Green Retail Ordinance. Our state has a 16% recycling rate, which is below the national average of 34%. This means that most of the material in our state goes into the landfill or worse, shows up as litter. The best way to address this, first of all, is pollution prevention and that is what this bag, this single-use ordinance would, would do. In the hierarchy of reduce, reuse, recycle, this ordinance is a strong proponent of reduction. Secondly, the reuse is very simple, bring your own bag. I live in Santa Fe and we have had our bag banned for a couple of years now. It did not take very long for residents to get well-trained to bring their own bag to the grocery store and it is second nature now. The third aspect of the reduce, reuse, recycle hierarchy is recycle. Well, my organization works really strongly for advocating the recycling within our state and two of the items, plastic straws and Styrofoam containers, cannot be recycled anywhere in New Mexico. They are made for the landfill. The items such as plastic bags, single-use plastic bags are recyclable if you're that small fraction of the residents that will take them to your Walmart or your Smiths and put it in the retail location there. What happens is most of those bags end up in the, the bins on the curb, your blue bins. And when those go to the Friedman Recycling Center, they get caught in the equipment, they clog the material, they cause costly stops in work time where they have to close down the material and clean that out. So, we want to remove that item from our recycling stream at the curb. And I just also wanted to address some issues that were brought up by the opponents of the bill. I think it is important that we define single-use plastic bags and have those definitions as part of the ordinance to make it an easy transition for everyone. Thank you. And I also have a letter that I can leave here.
Thank you, just, yeah. Our final speaker, Gwen Houston.
Let me start by saying I have eaten red chili out of a paper container in the past and I have not had any problem with it going from the restaurant to my belly. I've lived in New Mexico my whole life and when I was younger, we would, used to go to the parks and they would, there would be trash everywhere, there would be straws and cups and plastic bags all over while I, while I was trying to play. And that, we would also go down to the river to walk around and splash on the edge and there would be plastic bags and straws and single-use cups and containers on both sides of the river. And now that I have my two younger siblings, they're eight and nine, we take them to the same types of places and they're dirtier than ever. There's a lot of trash and a lot of that is single-use plastics and we almost can't take them to the, to those open places because of how dirty they are. And now, and now that I'm an adult, we, my organization has started doing regular trash pickups and we started last fall, I think. And in an hour, we started off of Central and we filled up seven, like industrial garbage bags full of trash and most of that was single-use plastics. And I think it's in the best interest of my siblings and in the best interest of a lot of the young people that came out to speak to you today, to vote in favor of limiting the single, limiting single-use plastics. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Harris, you had a question?
Yes, I'd like, not a question, I just want to move for a 60-day deferral.
Second.
And then we want to have some discussion, I guess we can.
Well, yeah, I think we should have some discussion on that. I don't know, I was going to turn it over to, yeah, Counselor Benton.
Well, I would oppose a 60-day deferral. I, I think we know what we're facing here and I think the cosponsors support a deferral or at least I do, but not a 60-day deferral. We're, we've also got some amendments here that should be satisfactory and of course, any counselor can, can propose other amendments. But these, they should be helpful, let's just put it that way, to some of the folks' concerns from the food service industry. But I do feel like that's too long. We were prepared to have some sort of deferral, but not 60 days. So, I'll oppose that motion.
Counselor Lechter.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I, this is, I think this is an issue, since it's a huge issue, affects a lot of folks, this is an issue that we probably need to have a couple work sessions on. I think those are things that really get that dialogue. I'm very uneducated about this issue. I'm uneducated about what's available to everybody to replace what we're trying to get rid of. And I think that we need to be educated to make, make a decision and I appreciate what the sponsors are doing because they're going and getting that information. But I would also like to have that information and I think to have dialogue with the restaurant folks, to find out what some alternatives are that we can do to, to do this, I think would be very helpful. So, whatever time it would take to have a couple work sessions, that people could really sit and we could have dialogue. Thank you.
Counselor Jones, did you have something? No? Counselor Harris.
Yes, I did ask for an economic analysis at the, at the finance committee meeting and, and I think, and Counselor Benton did ask, we get this done as quickly as possible and I don't see how we get it done faster than 60 days. But I'm happy to work with the counselors, the sponsors, with our council director and try to come up with a scope of something that can actually be done. But, I mean, legislation is important, the process is important. There's, I've found anywhere in life, there's a offset or there's a conflict between doing something fast and doing something right. So, I really want to do this right and, and I want to have a really good ordinance that takes into consideration lots of things, including the cost of gumming up the recycling things. I mean, that should be part of the economic analysis. So, I just don't see how we actually get an economic analysis done if we're trying to get it done in less than 60 days. But I think, I will assure the other counselors, I'm not trying to delay things more than, more than is necessary to have a good economic analysis product.
Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I will be supporting the 60-day deferral. In the past, when a counselor has requested for a fiscal impact analysis, the council has always respected that decision and a fiscal impact analysis is completed. I want to thank the sponsors also. I think this is a very, very important issue and I think we need to really sit down and look at this. I don't think 60 days is a long period of time because of the importance of this issue. I mean, it's going to impact Albuquerque and this city for many, many years to come. And I want to thank those individuals that came out and spoke on this issue, both for and against. I think both sides had compelling information to tell us, but I don't believe 60 days is really a long time for the impact that this will have in our city. And I will support the fiscal impact analysis moving forward. So, I would hope that Stephanie will, Yara will work with our team and the council to come up with a scope of what we are looking at doing. But at the same time, there is some segments of this ordinance that I do support. I think a lot of work has been done by the sponsors, but at the same time, I, you know, hear people like Mr. Garcia from Garcia's Kitchen and with, with what's going on, not just here, with the sickly bill, the, the plastic bag ordinance, this bill here, and what's going on in Santa Fe, I believe those numbers are accurate, the cost of a million dollars per year. I mean, for a small business like Garcia's, I think it would basically run them out of business. So, we need to really get their input because he did state that he wanted to work with us in making sure that this community is environmentally safe. And I know there was other speakers that spoke in favor, but let's continue to work together. I think 60 days will give us ample time, plenty of time, to come up with a real good ordinance that will be, that will be beneficial to this community and to our environment.
Thank you, Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I won't be supporting a 60-day deferral, but I, I'm willing to defer this for, I don't know, two weeks, four weeks, something like that. I don't think that we need that much time. You know, what this comes down to for me is convenience versus. You know, what this comes down to for me is convenience versus stewardship, environmental stewardship. While the economic analysis is being done, there's no way that they can quantify the harm that's being done to animal life, long-term effects of having petroleum-based products that break down, but not really biologically, not really chemically, rather, but they just become smaller and smaller and smaller until they're so small you can't see them anymore. And that's what we're growing our food in and feeding our cattle and chickens. And we end up ingesting that. There's no quantification for that. So, you know, and I absolutely do have compassion for small businesses, restaurants as well. But, you know, what we're doing is just naturally going along, recognizing that the awfully huge impacts that we have in our -- that we've created in our environment is creating more markets out there, you know, so that there are different options that restaurants who have a lot of to-go orders or carry-out orders of, you know, after a meal, with leftovers of a meal, that they can choose from. And I also did a really quick Google search, and I found, for example, straws, paper straws cost exactly the same in bulk as the plastic ones did. They were wrapped, paper-wrapped straws, and I saw all kinds of different options for a carry-out. So, you know, are we going to be inconvenienced? Yes, we all will be. Some businesses will be, as well as consumers will be inconvenienced to an extent until we learn to do things differently. And that's what we really need to do, is that we -- I firmly believe that we all need to learn how to live a little more simply, maybe, I'm not sure that's the right word, so that we don't create as much materials, you know, waste materials or recycled materials. And actually, there's a point, I don't know, I think somebody made it probably better than I can right now, but I just want to repeat it, that because of the changes in that whole recycling industry, there are materials now that are marked as recyclable, but there's not really the process, or maybe even more importantly, the market for them. So they end up in the landfills. One last thing, and then I'm stopped, oh, two last things, sorry. The Plaza Eatery, right upstairs, they feed me lunch many, many days a week. They serve salad in thin cardboard containers that close up very nicely. They also put chili in there, Chili Rianos, I don't know what else in there but chili, and they do just fine. And then the last thing truly is that several years ago, on a trip to Bosque del Apache, I saw a crane that was tangled up in a plastic bag. And, boy, that left a lasting impression on me. So I would prefer that we not go 60 days, let's go for a month, four weeks, I think that would be fine, and then continue talking with the establishments and seeing if we can, you know, help them out. Thank you.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I know there's a strong feelings on both sides on this, and my major concern here is we did ask in committee, which is what our rules say, we asked for an economic impact analysis. I think it would be inappropriate to not get that back. This is a precedent that I don't believe we want to set because someday, the sponsors on this will want an economic impact analysis, too. We have always honored that and waited until that came in before we voted on a project. Doesn't mean it'll make a difference, doesn't mean it'll change it, but since we've started asking for these, as long as it was asked for before it left committee, it has been honored as a request to get that information, and I think it's a bad precedent, and unless the sponsors are afraid of the information we're going to get, I can't see a good reason to not have that come in. I can't see that rushing this through an additional faster is going to make any difference because there are a lot of things still to be discussed about it and many people to weigh in on it. There are many people, in fact, almost every citizen of Albuquerque will be impacted by this one way or the other, and I believe this is not something that should be rushed. Let's take a look at what the economics say. It may have no effect, it may have a huge effect, but it's, that happens every time we ask for an economic impact analysis. I, for one, will support the motion that's on the floor and has been seconded for a 60-day deferral.
Thank you. Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Madam President. I am one of the sponsors of this bill, and I do believe that we need to look to the future. I don't think that one additional month is, and with all due respect to my cosponsors, is going to make a huge difference if we delay 60 days. I mean, I think it gives us the time to look at the issues that were raised, it gives us the time to look at other communities, it gives us the time to look at the different types of biodegradable options that are available out there. And also, an issue that was raised to me regarding, you know, exemptions for people who are disabled that have to have plastic straws or that need to use them, for people that maybe can't, you know, that live on fixed incomes, that's another issue that we haven't even discussed here tonight. And are they going to receive, you know, these, if they have to pay for these types of containers or bags, how do they do that, if they're using an EBT card or something like that? I mean, there's some issues in my mind that we still haven't fully addressed, and I talked earlier with Counselor Davis. I think that, you know, we need, we owe the public the respect of taking the time to actually look at all of these issues. The Restaurant Association, I heard some things tonight that I had not heard before. And, you know, thinking about my Starbucks every morning, I mean, you know, there, or people who, you know, utilize those types of, there is some sort of, I'm not sure what their, the material is that's used inside of those hot beverage containers, but they last. And, you know, I don't feel like I've, like I have enough knowledge right now about some of those, and I've done a lot of research on this, trust me, my office has. So I think that we just, this is an issue that is something that will carry on for generations, and I think that it, you know, we need to have that time, and I think 60 days is a reasonable amount of time.
Thank you. I think we have a motion and a second on the floor for.
Madam President, yeah, may I, just to close that piece, I just want to address the question about data really quickly. I would oppose it. I think we had originally assumed that we would be, have the data available in about 30 days or so. We haven't been waiting since the Finance Committee. In fact, some of you have seen in the packet, we've gotten some data from area restaurants, from the cities-owned restaurants on our own services, from service providers, restaurant supply providers here in Albuquerque who've given us some of those actual options and actual costs that we're doing. And I think we also have been working in concert with members of the Restaurant Association and with the community to bring these amendments that we wanted to bring for discussion this evening, addressing some of their concerns about how they pass along that cost and how we phased this in. And so I want to be clear that this is not a starting from zero and that we haven't had that conversation. I think the sponsors, or at least most of us, had thought we would be prepared in 30 days or so, maybe with a study session, to really dig in, to let folks do some of the work we've done, to like touch some of these items and see those Starbucks cups and the versions and how they're biodegradable and how they meet those standards. And so I think we have enough to do that in 30 days. If we're not, I think we just continue to defer. That's been our practice as well, is to continue to work through these. But with so much the council has to do and with so many businesses trying to make business plans for the next year, I think they owe it to their and in deference to our staff who's done a lot of that research work and is ready to help present that to us. I think a 30-day deferral would be appropriate, and if it's not, we'll continue it from there. But that would also keep the, sort of, the momentum and the sense of urgency about all of us to get this done and to keep our attention on it for, in the next 30 days instead of deferring it to 60, when honestly, we'll probably not do a lot of work until the last two weeks. So I would encourage folks to vote no, and then we'll redo that as a 30 would be my suggestion. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. So we, actually, before I go to the vote, I just wanted to say that I would agree with Counselor Jones, you know, I really don't want to set bad precedents like that because, you know, on this issue, it might be convenient for some of the councilors, and then at an opposing time, it might be, it might not be. So I think, you know, to give respect to Counselor Harris for his request, I will also support the 60-day deferral. So we have a motion, a second on the floor for a 60-day deferral. All those in favor say yes. Oppose, no. Motion passes. We will be, we will be taking a dinner break right now. Thank you.